From Shanghai, May has dedicated herself to addressing one of the most complex challenges of our time: homelessness. Under the mentorship of city professionals, she identified a critical gap in mental health services for people experiencing homelessness and created Remember, a trauma-informed support group that helps restore dignity, rebuild identity, and promote healing. The Remember group is also already active at two sites in Orange County and is working to expand to the Bridge Shelter, which serves Newport Beach. It's become a powerful, community-based model that brings together clinicians and peers with lived experience to make a real difference. May embodies the spirit of empathy, civic engagement, and innovative leadership, inspiring not only her peers but also our entire community. On behalf of the entire City Council, myself, the mayor of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire city of Newport Beach, I am proud to recognize May Shen for her service, commitment, and meaningful contributions to our city and beyond. Congratulations, May.
Thank you so much. I would just like to thank, obviously, Mayor Stapleton for promoting civic engagement through the mayor's youth council, also Barbara and Robert, who were both my mentors, as well as Natalie, who's been doing such amazing work with the homeless community, and I'm so inspired by her. And I'm really thankful for this opportunity because it'll truly help me expand and, with this proclamation, allow for more collaboration and expansion of the program. So, thank you.
Well said. Thank you. All right. Hey, we'll come take a photo over here. Okay. Is Ted Robinson here? Where's Ted?
A little bit ill.
Okay. Terrific. Yeah, you can come up forward, for sure, and then I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. And then, I guess, no photos necessary, so I'll just hand it to you, maybe. Is that appropriate?
We're happy to take a photo.
Yeah, let's do a photo. Yeah. We'll do it. You'll be standing, Ted. I think with AI technology, we can always find a way to get this done. So terrific. Well, we're here honoring Ted Robinson. Today, we're recognizing Edward Barr Ted Robinson, a man whose life embodies hard work, service, and dedication. At just 11 years old, Ted began working as a newspaper seller in Los Angeles and took on countless jobs growing up, all to help his family and build a strong foundation of perseverance. He went on to serve four years in the United States Army stationed Okinawa between the Korean and Vietnam Wars, where he showed great courage and devotion to our country. After returning home, Ted's career path led him from journalism to UCLA to banking, public relations, and ultimately to real estate development, where he found his passion and made a lasting impact through projects across California. Ted moved to Newport Beach in 1976 and later purchased Larson's Shipyard, establishing both his business and home here. Nearly 50 years later, he remains a valued and respected member of our community. Beyond his professional success, Ted's life has always centered on family, faith, and community, and he continues to enrich the spirit of Newport Beach. On behalf of the entire City Council and our entire community, it is my honor to recognize Edward Barr Ted Robinson for his service and accomplishments and his lasting legacy and his contributions to our great city of Newport Beach. Congratulations, Ted.
He's fairly old, of course, or up there, and he's at the Vivante Center. Today, he felt really ill. On Friday, he was fairly okay to walk and, aside from being half-blind, it seems like his bones are starting to kind of act up. So that's where they're all at right now. So I'm happy to take that.
Yeah, let's do a quick photo with you, and we got a bunch of firefighters. We could go pick them up and bring them over here. Okay, Jack's here, right? There he is. What's up, Jack? How you doing? Good. Jack, why don't you come on up, and I'll go ahead and read the commendation. This is great. All right, so the city of Newport Beach proudly recognizes the extraordinary impact of Jack's Feed the Need, a movement born during the pandemic that has provided more than 20,000 meals to frontline workers, the hungry, and the homeless. What began as a simple call to help grew into a beacon of compassion, uniting our community in generosity, dignity, and hope. Through Campus Jaxx, this effort has not only nourished bodies but has also lifted spirits with live music, joy, and connection during a time of great challenge. It has shown us the power of community and the lasting change that comes from service to others. The remarkable work has shown us that no act of kindness is too small and that when combined with those acts can transform lives and bring lasting change. For his vision, his compassion, and the unwavering commitment to giving back, we extend our deepest gratitude and commendation to Jack Jasper. Congratulations.
Good mayor. It's an honor, City Council members, and I did want to mention that I couldn't have done this without the, what I would call uncommon sense of the 2020 City Council and Planning Commission that allowed me to open up an outdoor safe space during the pandemic. And without that foresight and 2020 hindsight, I wouldn't be here today. I would be out of business. So, you know, my hat's off to the City Council. I was in front of the City Council was probably 1989 when I pulled my conditional use permit for Jack shrimp on Coast Highway. I had that for 26 years, and I'm just celebrating my 10th anniversary at Campus Jaxx. And we've serviced over 22,000 meals to the homeless shelters, the local, and Bridges was one of those shelters that we donated to as well, and Women's Wise Place, which is a women's shelter here in Orange County. And also, I want to thank the musicians, because the musicians that came in during the first month or two when we opened up donated 100% of the proceeds from that to go to the, to Feed the Need. And then, the next five years, they were donating 20% of all the ticket sales. So I want to thank the musicians. I want to thank everybody who came and bought a ticket. And also, we had a lot of direct donors that came in and donated and allowed us to be able to do that. I had a lot of help, a lot of help. So, but I couldn't have done it without initially the City Council, because if I hadn't had that, I wouldn't be here today. So, thank you for extending this award, and I'm just really pleased to be a part of the community here in Newport Beach, very generous community.
I love it. Well, thank you for all you've done, and I think you deserve a commendation for being in the restaurant business for 36 years as well. So, well done. Congratulations. As your mayor for 2025, my theme this year's been all about celebrate Newport. So we've gone from the very beginning, back in January, to the birthplace of Newport Beach, which was Lower Castaways in 1870, and now we've moved in to the airport. So I figured who better to give us a presentation in the airport than our 1998 mayor, Tom Edwards, also Citizen of the Year in, what was that, 2000? Decades-long service here in the city, over 40 years of service to Newport Beach. He's an aviation consultant since 2008. His hard work as an aviation consultant for the city of Newport, he's well-known for his extensive institutional knowledge on issues related to John Wayne Airport. He negotiated the settlement agreement in 1985 with John Wayne Airport that set restrictions on flight curfews, noise, and passenger numbers. So it gives me a great honor and pleasure to introduce Mayor Tom Edwards to give us an update and a presentation on the history of John Wayne Airport. So, Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
It's been a while since I've been called mayor.
Once a mayor, always a mayor.
That's what they say.
Yeah.
Anyway, first of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Stapleton for inviting me to address the council this evening about John Wayne Airport, an issue which I've been involved in for a number of years. As council and many of the residents of Newport Beach know and understand, the airport is subject to an iconic settlement agreement that regulates airport noise and capacity at the airport. What many, however, may not recognize is that it is literally one of a kind. JWA is the most regulated airport in the country. Tonight, I hope not to bore you unnecessarily with specific details of the agreement, but rather to put the agreement into an historical context of uniqueness, to be treasured, protected, respected, and hopefully extended in the future, while at the same time pay tribute to the hundreds, nay, thousands of residents who worked tirelessly to help create and establish the agreement in order to protect the residents of the city while still enjoying the benefits of an airport. As an aside, I'm going to name a lot of names. I'm going to leave, I'm sure, people out, but there's a lot of people that did a lot of work, and frankly, some of them have never been recognized. Historically speaking, the airport until the '70s was still a sleepy little airport, but as Orange County grew, it exhibited growing pains, which resulted in the Orange County Supervisors entertaining significant expansion. This also came at the time of the airline deregulation in 1978. As a result, the residents of Newport, as well as the surrounding communities, became concerned with exactly what expansion of the airport might look like. Enter, first of all, the Mariners Community Association, then under the leadership of Clarence Buzz Turner, which I was also a part, first challenged the airport during the state-mandated noise variance hearings. We were joined also with a small group from Dover Shores. I can still remember the three parties. I think it was Sue Simpson, Gene Wagner, and Bill Patrick, who on their own went, also went out and hired their own council. Those hearings, while not entirely successful and later disposed of as a result of federal rules and regulations, were successful in stirring the interest of the city of Newport Beach for the first time and entering the fray, and get the attention of the then councilwoman Jackie Heather. However, it was ultimately the next greater effort by the county, this was in 1982, to expand the airport, which led to the creation of the Airport Working Group, under the leadership, again, of Buzz Turner, to enter the fray and challenge the proposed environmental impact report, which ultimately resulted in AWG, along with SPON, under the leadership of Gene Watt, as well as the city of Newport Beach filing litigation. And in the first attempt by the county to certify the EIR, the EIR was deemed inadequate, unsuccessful, and the county was enjoined completely from any further expansion. In 1983, the county took the shrewd action after having revised the EIR, filing a preemptive strike in federal court in an attempt to shortcut the parties and further challenges in the state court. It's the federal litigation which ultimately was the basis for entering into the JWA settlement agreement, which regulates airport noise and capacity as well as the important curfew. I cannot emphasize enough the efforts of all those involved. Some of you already know, like Barbara Litchman, Tom Williams, Marion Roboy, Lynn Bloomberg, Len Hall, Pete Drummond, Tom Anderson, Bonnie O'Neil, Esther Fine, Dan Stringer, Jim Dunlap, Alan Beek, Dave Ellis. Nor can I forget the outstanding representation by our then attorney, Clem Schut, as well as the efforts of then-city attorney Bob Burnham, along with the council, who then later would engrave the agreement in the city's airport policy and later on establish the corridor of cities of Irvine, Santa Ana, Costa Mesa, Tustin, Anaheim, Orange, Laguna Beach, Laguna Woods, Villa Park, all in support of the settlement agreement. So after the settlement agreement was entered into and worked quite successfully for approximately five years, simply put, it limited airport noise and capacity. Somewhat understandably, it did not sit well with the FAA and the airlines. As a result, federal legislation was proposed in Congress to limit and restrict the very type of agreement that John Wayne had specifically put in place, an agreement which now, most importantly, and I will describe in greater detail later, had the full support of the county of Orange. However, again, AWG, SPON, and the city, along with the full support of the county, took action, this time in a different form, this time turning out 500-plus individual residents for two days of hearings in Newport Beach held by Congress on the very John Wayne settlement agreement, with multiple parties speaking in defense of the JWA settlement agreement. I think one of the greatest accomplishments during those hearings, which might be that the parties were able to have the hearings chaired by both the Democrat and Republican, Barbara Boxer and Chris Cox, respectively, to not only showcase this issue in support of the agreement, but ultimately were successful in grandfathering the JWA settlement agreement so that it was exempt from the ANCA restrictions. The agreement was preserved. Again, I cannot emphasize enough the cooperation and collaboration with the county in this effort. As I testified at the time of the hearing, it is rare that you will find an airport and its surrounding community are on the same side of the issue of noise as an airport and an airport. After all, it must be remembered that the county owns and operates the airport. Cooperation and collaboration were pivotal in protecting the community. Throughout the years, the people at the airport, such as Jan Minnemeyer, Vince Mestry, Alan Murphy, Courtney Weirchuck, Eric Free, Nick Haskins, understood the concept of balancing the needs of the community and the needs of an airport. I would also include in this group their extremely able council, Michael Gasky and Lori Balance. The settlement agreement has been extended and amended multiple times, with the consent of the parties I've previously mentioned. It now expires in 2030, however, as to capacity limitations and as to the all-in-four curfew in 2035. The latest efforts to successfully extend the settlement agreement, the negotiations took place in 2012 and were concluded in 2014, included the parties I've previously mentioned, but also brought new voices from the community, like Melinda Sealy, Jennifer McDonald, Tom Naughton, Tom Curry, Mel Beal into the fray, as well as the council under the leadership of then Keith Curry in Rush Hill, city managers Homer Bloudow and Dave Kiff, and city attorney Aaron Harp. I would be remiss, however, if I fail to remember our then supervisor, John Morlock, who was especially supportive of the community. John always lets you know where he stood. He understood that the settlement agreement specifically recognizes that JWA is limited by the significant and substantial physical and environmental constraints affecting its use. My favorite quote from John, when asked about one of the proposed expansions at the airport, responded that it is, quote, "a naivete that is eye-rolling." So today, you're not going to be able to read part of that, but so today, as a result of the efforts at many of JWA, is one of the most regulated airports in the nation, perhaps the world. And yet, at the same time, it has been rated the best airport for its size in the country for the last two years. If anything, JWA should be the poster child for how an airport and a community can successfully work together. That bigger is not better. Just imagine if there was no JWA settlement agreement, no limitation on capacity, and no limitation as to the curfew. So that is where we are. This is the legacy this council and the councils in the future must deal with in order to protect the quality of life in Newport Beach. The clock is ticking. The agreement needs always to be protected. It can be accomplished. It will not be easy now or in the future, but as the past, the community will step up, the council will act, and if cooperation and collaboration prevail, all of Newport will be successful. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was terrific, good insight and history of all things John Wayne Airport, and I think we'd all agree, it's probably personally my favorite airport in the entire world. So we do like having that amenity nearby, and we like all that you and your team have done to make sure that it protects quality of life for all of us here in Newport Beach. So, well done. Thank you. Very well said. Okay, we're going to move into study session. Any clarification on consent calendar items? Do any of my council colleagues need a clarification on consent calendar items? Okay, seeing none, let's move into our study session item, a discussion to consider possible traffic calming and public safety measures in the Bayview Heights neighborhood. City manager, do you want to go ahead and open this up and introduce the topic?
Well, this was at the request, A1 request from Councilmember Wiegand, but I'll go ahead, in the interest of time, turn it right over to our Public Works Director, Dave Webb.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Yep, Dave Webb, your Public Works Director, and also, for the first time next to me, is Kevin Riley. He's our acting traffic, city traffic engineer tonight, and he'll be talking about this item. Just as a real quick item that Grace interformed you as, this is a follow-up to an A1 item that Councilmember Wagon brought back in August of 25. It had to do with Bayview Heights traffic calming and also public safety concerns out of that. So with that, to start, we've talked, we've looked at this as staff several times over the past. We've had concerns about that raised, and we'll talk about it in the presentation. But at the October 24th District 3 Town Hall that Councilmember Wagon had, it came forth again, and the residents were concerned, several of them brought up that they wanted to look at maybe adding speed cushions to the neighborhood, and also, they brought up the thing about maybe closing Spruce at Zenith. Significant items there. Staff at the time advised the residents that we've looked at this before, it doesn't meet our council policy, L26, but with that, they wanted to move forward and still do a petition and bring it forth towards council to see if we might waive that policy. We've also advised them we're not necessarily in agreement with closing Spruce, but with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin. He can go through the petition and the items on it, and then we'll have a discussion. We also have our public safety folks here tonight to talk about the public safety items, the concerns that he brought up, so we'll bring them into the presentation in a bit. Kevin?
Good evening, Mayor Stapleton and members of the City Council. My name is Kevin Riley. I'm your acting city traffic engineer, and I'm here to present on this item. So what we see here is the study area is bounded by Cypress Street to the west, Mesa Drive to the south, Bayview Avenue to the east, and Bristol South to the north. The intersection that's circled is Spruce Street, Spruce Avenue and Zenith Avenue. That is the location where the street closure was requested. Prior to January 2002, the Bayview Heights community was within the jurisdiction of unincorporated Orange County. With the area annexation, the city inherited the Santa Ana Heights specific plan. One element of that plan included eight traffic improvements. Those traffic improvements range from traffic signals, other right-of-way improvements, and then also specific to improvement four, monitoring traffic volume within the Bayview track. At the time, the city has collected traffic volume data on several occasions within recent years, and those traffic volumes have been found to be of the nature of a residential street.
I'm sorry, Kevin, just to note, all those items have been completed. We have completed all those items that came with this specific plan.
How long does a traffic study last? Like, if you put one of the things in the road, is it 24 hours, 48 hours, is it there for a week?
So for value, it stays there for a week, and we collect it over a couple days, and it's, the collection of the data that we retrieve is 24-hour counts. Also, with speed, it could stay there for a week, and then we collect, we retrieve several days of data.
Cool.
So this is the City Council traffic management policy. It consists of three levels of traffic mitigation tools. Level one does not require a petition process. These are items that can be implemented at the department level, the Public Works Department level. The tools include enforcement, signing, minor striping, a speed trailer that's provided by the police department, and public outreach efforts. Level two includes speed cushions. It does have quantifying warrant requirements, such as minimum street segment, minimum traffic volumes, and also the 85th percentile speed based on the posted speed limit. Level three is where your various types of street closures lie. The intent is to remove excessive cut-through traffic, and it also, and the main warrant is to, for a street to exceed 4,000 vehicles per day. As it relates to level two and three, a minimum of 70% of all properties within the study area must support any level two or level three traffic calming measure to be implemented. This is the traffic data that the city collected at several moments in time on Orchid Street, Spruce Avenue, and Bayview Avenue, back in February 2021 and in March 2021, and as well as May 2023. So, for example, in May 2023, the 24-hour traffic volume was 687 vehicles experienced in that day, and then the corresponding 85th percentile speed was 29 miles per hour. When considering all the speeds, all of these speeds are within prudent range of the posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour, and the traffic volumes are low. From a qualitative perspective, these traffic volumes will, is considered to be low, and the neighborhood is considered to be calm. This is a subsection of the study area we consider for speed cushions. It consisted of 164 properties. Of those properties, we received 147 responses, and of those responses, 55% said yes to speed cushions, and 45% said no to speed cushions or did not provide a response at all. As it relates to the quantifying warrant requirement, the streets are, does meet the minimum street segment, and only Orchid Street met the minimum volume requirement, but the speeds and the support was not met, deeming the traffic management policy not being met. This is a circulation of the neighborhood. There are three existing access points. One at Spruce Avenue in Bristol, number two is at Orchard and Birch, and number three is at Mesa Drive and Birch. If we were to move access point one, there will be two remaining access points at two and three. Again, these are the most conservative traffic volumes. We have similar areas within the city that experience 1,200 vehicles per day. So, for example, in Dover Shores, there's comparable residential streets that experience 1,200 vehicles per day. So I would consider these volumes low. This is the petition response for the entire neighborhood. For consideration of the Spruce closure, there were 315 properties. Of those 315, we received 260 responses. Of those responses, 59% said yes to the Spruce closure, and 41% said no to the, no to the closure or did not provide a response. As far as the quantifying warrant requirements, none of them were met, deeming that the traffic management policy was not met. So given that the level two items, such as the speed cushions or the street closure not being met under the traffic management policy, staff came up with alternative measures that we can implement at the Public Works Department level. This item is the edge line, so you can see on Mariners Drive, the picture, the white line is the edge line, and the intent is to move traffic drivers closer to the center line, which would require more focus, but also, it provides more space and visibility for residents coming out of driveways. The second level one item that we can implement is the 25 mile-per-hour stencils in the road, so you can see it's circled in yellow. And I just wanted to provide some more information that there are existing posted speed limit signs, but this can signs, but this can act as a additive measure to help support if a driver misses the posted speed limit sign. This is the level two item that did not meet the traffic management policy, the speed cushions. If the council decided to waive the policy, these are the locations where we can implement the speed cushions. The red line represents the distance between speed cushions and, and the distance between from the speed cushion to the intersection. So this is a level three item. It consists of a cul-de-sac that's overlaid on the intersection of Spruce Avenue and Zenith Avenue. The whole entire intent of this slide is to show that this layout is not feasible. So when you consider any street closure, it needs to have the ability for a large delivery vehicle or a fire engine to be able to turn around. When you look at this one, the overlap in red, that is private property, so that's why we deemed this layout not feasible.
I was just going to clarify, it is feasible if you're willing to buy property and affect the commercial properties. We put this out there because it was requested, this is how you normally close a street, and the red area is we would have to purchase property. We haven't talked to those commercial properties and decided also affect their parking and circulation. So feasibility, if you really wanted to go there, it just takes some effort for sure, but we're pretty concerned about trying to do something like that. Sorry to interrupt.
So then, we were challenged with coming up with a concept that did not impact private property. So this concept is called a hammerhead. The idea, if a large delivery vehicle or fire engine was driving southbound on Spruce, they would turn right or left, and then they would use the, the other side of the hammerhead to back up and turn back north on Spruce Avenue. This particular layout does require the street to be widened by six feet on each side. This is something that we don't support as the department, the Public Works Department. It does have issues with utility implications. There are opportunities for trash buildup at the 90-degree points at the end of the hammerhead, and then there are also our encroachment impacts. So with traffic common and circulation into, in consideration, the traffic data does not, the traffic data collection does not meet the City Council traffic management policy, and then also it does not meet the level of support. So at this point, we talked a lot about traffic, but the community does have concerns about public safety. So we do have Lieutenant Bitzallet here from the Police Department, and we have Assistant Chief Carr here from the Fire Department as the experts to talk about public safety.
Council?
I'll talk about the, first of all, for public safety, I'll start with our traffic, traffic issues. I know that was one of the main issues that had come up initially when I was approached about this. For the neighborhood itself, or what, you know, they're focusing on is like the study area, the, the study area, the neighborhood falls into something called Reporting District, and that's Reporting District 33. So that small neighborhood, actually on the outskirts of it, it expands all the way out to Santa Ana Avenue, up to Birch Street, and down into the Back Bay. So there's a lot of other parts of that community. So when we're discussing data, or when we're collecting data about accidents and crime, it's all going to be part of that reporting district. But I can kind of neck it down a little bit. As for, you know, traffic concerns and accidents in that area, they're averaging about two traffic accidents a year, just in that focus area, that study area. Although one of our most dangerous intersections is north of them, up in Birch and Irvine, that, that neighborhood itself, the, the study area only averages about one to two accidents a year. And then for traffic enforcement, you know, we do, we're focused, our traffic division is focused on data, so we go to intersections and streets where we are, you know, we're encountering lots of, you know, injury accidents, or we are getting complaints from the public. So our focus in RD33 is mostly up along Bristol, so that is a pretty high-speed street. And again, like I mentioned, you know, when you're going up Bristol and Irvine, those areas, that's where we have a lot of, a lot of accidents. So we do a lot of enforcement up there. And again, I, you know, I was going back through some of my emails, and I keep most every email when we have complaints in neighborhoods, and I didn't see anything where we had actual formal complaints coming into the Police Department specifically for that, that study area. So traffic-wise, that's just kind of a quick viewpoint. Crime-wise, again, for this particular area, where a lot of crime is focused, and RD33 is along Bristol, it's the gas stations, this, the, the coffee shops, the restaurants, the liquor stores, and then we have apartment complexes that are actually to the west of the neighborhood that, that have a lot of crime. So for that area, the, the general crime for the study area is very low. So I look at things like residential burglaries, auto burglaries, and petty thefts. Those things are very low compared to some other neighborhoods in the city. And then talking about response times, you know, I can't give you an exact impact of how that's going to, you know, how, how it's going to impact our officers when they're responding. Our, our police cars and our computers have the ability, much like Google Maps, when a police officer gets a call for service, they can be directed into the neighborhood along the path of least resistance. So if we do close off a certain area, that's going to impact our officers responding from Bristol or the northern part of, of that neighborhood. So to service the northern part of that neighborhood, we'd have to access it from the southern portion, because the northern portion would be closed. Again, I can't, I can't speak to response times, because I think you'd have to do a study of actually closing that down to see what that would look like, and I don't think we'd want to do that, but when we're talking about our officers responding, it's just going to be another avenue that's going to be taken away. Another concern I would have is that we take that, that closure away, and we have two ways into the neighborhood, and one of those has to be taken out for construction or some other, some other incident now we're, we're limiting our officers. So I like as much access to the neighborhood as possible. So just speaking on how that would delay our response times, that's about as good as I could get for, for how we respond or what our calls for service are for that neighborhood.
And could you speak to your new Flock system, too? There was a question about that, your camera system.
Yeah, so we, we have Flock in that area. Flock's our LPR system, so you can see at the top of the screen, the-
What is LPR?
License plate readers. At the top of the screen, you can see the red, they're kind of red icons, there's three of them there, at Birch Street, Bristol Street North in Birch, Bristol Street South in Birch, and then Irvine and Bristol. So the way they were, they were fashioned is to catch all traffic coming and going in and out of the city. So for that area, that general area of RD33 or Reporting District 33, those are the three LPR cameras collecting data for that particular area.
Thank you. I wondered if Assistant Chief Carr, do you have anything to add concerning fire response?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Fire Department has two considerations, one shared with PDE as far as access and possibility of affecting response times. It would probably increase the response times to the backside of that neighborhood if we closed off Spruce. I don't have exact data either, but I can tell you it would create a little bit of a delay coming from the Bristol side, and most people might think that local fire station is going to be their primary response, which is true. However, if it's a fire, we're going to bring units from Fashion Island as well that would be coming up Bristol and having to make a U-turn, and certainly Spruce would give them quick access into the backside of that neighborhood. So response times being our number one consideration. Second one would be the possibility of transporting patients to the new hospital on Jamboree. We currently are not doing that yet, but we anticipate that as a possibility in the future, and closing down Spruce would also delay transport times heading out of the neighborhood towards the new hospital. So those are our two for the Fire Department.
Thank you. And with that, too, I challenge staff to, because some of the questions from the neighborhood was concerns that it doesn't look like residential neighborhood from Bristol, that people might go down there inadvertently. So one of the thoughts we have, this isn't necessarily traffic calming, but we did do this on Bay Avenue on the peninsula, if you're right by the American Legion, we tried to separate the area and make it more commercial. We talked about maybe doing an entry monument like you see there on the left. It would just be a median in the middle, but when you look down from Bristol, you might see that and say, hey, that's not quite a straight street or anything like that. That might be an option, a physical item that might help maybe just put a few people who don't know where they're going to kind of turn around and not go down there. The next slide is just a different version of that. We typically would use this for traffic calming, but we already have a four-way stop here. You could put what they call a Seattle circle, a traffic circle in there. Again, trying to break that long visual look at Spruce. These are, again, not traffic calming so much as they're trying to give neighborhood identification to meet some of the concerns that were raised by the residents in the Town Hall meeting. With that, I think, kind of summing it up, you heard Kevin talk about level one, and we've threw that out to the neighborhood. If they want to do edge striping or some additional markings, like Kevin said, the neighborhood already has speed limit signs in it. Most neighborhoods don't, but we have 25 mile an hour in there already, but we could add some additional stuff. Do the data. Staff's not supporting the speed cushions at this time, particularly the, the 85th percentile speed's already down. And where we look at it, for example, when we did Mariners years back, the 85th percentile before the speed cushions was in the 34, 35 mile range. We're down here in 29. Our past surveys from Mariners show it's about 28, 29 is where we ended up. So we're already kind of there already, so I don't think the speed cushions would add much to that, but it would add inconvenience, it'd add noise and signage issues that might come up. So that's why we're not really in favor of speed cushions. And for the reasons you heard from public safety and also from general circulation, we're not real supportive of closing off the street. We don't think that would be added, really is unsolvable problem, it might create other problems to it. Additionally, we haven't talked to those commercial properties, so closing those streets off, they use that access through the neighborhood to return, so you'd be affecting their access to that point. We'd have to look into that. That concludes staff's presentation, and I will turn it over to you, Mayor, and the questions and answers.
All right, terrific. Councilman Wiegand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank staff for spending a lot of time on this. We've been talking about this for over a year now with the Town Hall that we conducted in District 3, and we heard a lot of residents coming out and discussing this issue. So, and a fair amount of them are out here tonight that will likely speak to this item. And I appreciate their support, too, trying to speak to the community. This wasn't an easy endeavor. This wasn't something that we could just wave a wand up here and do. This required them to go out onto the streets and knock on doors and really go out and get their support. And that graph, and we'll be able to pull that up probably here in a few more moments, but two of them show what people wanted to do, either both close the street, add speed bumps, or one of the two items, or none at all. And so that is important to view as we go through this discussion. My apologies to my colleagues, this is something that we've never done, at least on my time of the council, having this discussion. Maybe former Mayor Blom did this with Dover Shores, I'm not sure when that happened, but I'll ask some, just some brief teed-up questions here related to that petition. What was the percentage of the residents that went out and supported either both, you know, breakdowns? So all of, because if you have both supporting a speed bump and a street closure, that would apply to both tabulations, right? So what were the percentages that, and the percentile that was required of them? Because I remember in the Dover Shores discussion, there was not a, the, the threshold wasn't met, and council overrode those decisions and added those speed bumps regardless of not hitting that. So we, as a council, have a little bit of leverage here to implement or not to implement. But what was the staff, or what was the response rate from the community on, let's start with road closure?
So we received a 59% support for the, the closure, and then we received a 55% support for the cushions.
Okay, and that includes those who wanted both?
No, no. So the, those that wanted both for the, the street closure, it was about 38%, and then 48% for the cushions.
But what I mean is, if you voted yes to both, you would be tabulated in both speed bump category?
That, that's correct, yes.
Okay, okay. So, and then if you were a resident and you did not respond, were you considered a no, or were you considered a separate category?
If a resident did not respond, they were considered a no.
Okay, so that, that I think has, you know, obviously concerns to the public, but as far as the code and the, and the rules that we have to follow up here and what you're following, there's specific language that, that says a no is considered-
This has come up before, just on that quote. Typically, when we don't, we do a lot of effort to try to get as many people respond. I know Kevin and Brad before him did a lot of work with the community to get more survey results. When someone doesn't respond, it kind of indicates they want status quo. Don't change anything, and that's a property value. If you, we consider them a no by policy for that reason, but if you consider them a yes, you may be changing their conditions of their property, values, access, noise, things to their property. So I've always seen it's kind of considered a default no on that.
Okay, okay. And I'm asking these because it's likely it's going to come up from them to ask us, but we weren't on a position to answer their questions. Staff can later, if we direct them to, but when it comes to the late, last study that was done in May of 2023, do we think that's an adequate amount of time between now and October of 2025 that that data would be supported? Because it was two around the same time for 21, another for 23, and then nothing since. Do, do we, do we think that that-
Do you have a concern on that, Kevin, or?
So you're talking about the traffic volume data that we-
The last study is being done.
Yes, so since the land uses haven't changed, we don't expect there to be a much of a delta in the data.
Okay, okay. So I guess for us and our consideration tonight for council would be, you know, implement level one items, which would be the striping, you know, some of the, the numbering on the streets, the potential for the landmark items, I think that could be considered level one. And then level two would be speed bumps, and then level three would be the road closure. And then obviously, some of the public safety, you know, discussion on, on Flock cameras could potentially be something to talk about. So I don't want to go on too much on, on my end. You know, there is a lot of folks that, that came out today to especially and specifically talk to this. If any council member wants to ask a question now, I, I kind of been living this because I think we've had several discussions with staff, and then we had a community meetup with some of the folks that were doing the petition drive to come meet with staff and myself, and we brought public safety in those discussions. So I'm kind of a little more in the weeds on this since it's, you know, on, on a District 3 basis, but I'd love for the council the input. If they don't, then go to the public for that conversation.
Okay, Councilman Blom?
Thank you very much. Okay, just a couple of pieces, and yes, I did get to live this in Dover Shores, and we've, we've walked back and forth on that project as well. I think that's why we're talking about speed cushions and not bumps even to this point. Let me address that piece real quick, because I do think it's important. And even looking at some of the maps for the respondent pieces, you know, Orchard does look like it has a lot of yes votes going on in that area, and so, you know, if I was to say, hey, let's throw a, a speed bump there, or I'm sorry, a speed cushion, sounds much better, Dave, that's way, way sexier than this bump. No one wants that. But if we're running speed cushions in that area next to respondents that really wanted this, I don't necessarily think it's a huge issue. I also might support something because the cost is not extravagant when we look at something like that, you know? We can take them out, too, if there's issues, which is why I've tended to work with those in those neighborhoods. There are a couple of other pieces that I caught my interest here. Mainly just the ingress and ingress, why do we not have Flock cameras currently around that neighborhood now?
So when the, when the initial planning came up for our Flock cameras, it was to, to capture, you know, incoming and outgoing traffic from, you know, into the city. And so those cameras, the way they're set up right now, if someone's coming into the city from Costa Mesa or off the, off the freeway, we're going to capture them entering the city and exiting. So we, we, we set up the plan to be in those areas where we're, we're, we're not going to have any holes where we're going to miss it. Now, the rest of the city, there are part of that planning, there are a lot of communities within Newport Beach that have, have funded their own Flock cameras. So in some of those neighborhoods, you know, again, they're helping us, but our, our main objective was to get those intersections that we're going to be capturing everything coming in and going.
No, that's wonderful, and I think, you know, I've been such a fan of what you guys have been doing with Flock cameras, and I think, you know, looking up and down at the council for safety is always our number one thing, and if I think you came to us and said, can we fund three more to maybe protect this neighborhood that's having a little bit of issue there, I don't think we'd find a hard time finding some consensus there. But, you know, if crime, and so really, I'm looking at this in two ways. One, if there's a crime issue, let's see if we can, you know, just batten it up a little more so they feel more secure. said, can we fund three more to maybe protect this neighborhood that's having a little bit of issue there, I don't think we'd find a hard time finding some consensus there. But, you know, if crime, and so really, I'm looking at this in two ways. One, if there's a crime issue, let's see if we can, you know, just batten it up a little more so they feel more secure. That's great. And I don't think that cost putting into our network is a horrible thing. And then the second piece is, if people are speaking through the neighborhood, and I, I'll leverage a little bit off of Councilmember Wagon's piece here. The neighbor, the city's changed a lot, right? New neighborhoods are changing nonstop. Families are growing. It tends to be like the newest baby boom in, in Orange County. Let's call it in Newport. I see more children out than ever before, and we're looking for the places where we can have a little more space and raise our families. And actually, I see Holly out there. Hello, Holly. How are you? Good to see you. When I first came out here, 2141 Mesa was where I first lived. And I say first came out here, was born and raised here, but I left for a long time, and I made it back to this neighborhood, and it truly is a neighborhood. You know, there's not a lot of people wandering in from Bristol. It's segmented out. And so part of our job up here is to figure out how, how do we make a neighborhood more of a neighborhood, more of a little village within. And so a lot of that is creating a peace of mind with the residents that live there, a safety. And sometimes when we look at the costs that we spend on other things, and we look at some of these, I, I don't have a huge issue with throwing a couple dollars at this to get some mitigation members there, to put a couple of cameras up that go off of our entire program, and to throw in a couple of cushions in front of the neighbors that want them. I'm not saying that I won't hear from you guys later because you don't like the noise of the cushion in front of your house. It's a very real issue, as Mr. Webb knows. But I'm sure we can always store a few of those back at our, our lot and put them somewhere else when we need them, which is the beauty of these cushions. So I'd love to hear from the neighbors as well, but my general thoughts on this.
Are you, are you saying that you'd basically support cushions on Orchid? Because we had a lot of yes responses there, but keep the, keep Spruce open?
I'm, I'm, I'm not, not there for a full, or a full motion yet, but I'm-
That's where you're, okay.
Yeah.
Of the opinion, I felt like with most of the residents on Orchid saying they'd be open to speed cushions, that seems like it would make-
The most, yeah.
-sense there if that's where we're seeing a lot of traffic and young families.
There's a lot there, and I agree with, with the mayor saying that it seems, I think Spruce, they definitely seem more excited about closing Spruce. I, I do have some personal issues with closing roads, as many people know about my previous thoughts on Tustin Avenue and the Heights. I, I don't like the idea that we just close down neighborhoods. I think access is one of the most important things we have. And also, sometimes you, you just want to get out of your neighborhood from that way. And we also want emergency response in from that way. But that being said, yeah, you know, I, I, I support any type of traffic calming measures, especially when our kid's out. It's, it's important to me.
Okay. Terrific. Any other comments on council? Councilmember Barto.
Today. No, I was going to say, the only section that really met any kind of criteria was that section on Orchid, Orchid. And so that I would lean towards highlighting that area for speed cushions because the volume of traffic is higher.
Okay. All right. Terrific. Raise your hand if you're planning on speaking on this item tonight. Okay. If you're going to speak, why don't we get two lines here with form? We'll do an on-deck circle, so each, somebody can take each microphone. We'll limit it to two minutes per speaker. But why don't we go ahead and start with Ms. Wortman, if you want to take, you want to go first? Yeah. Why don't you start there, and we'll get the next speaker here on this mic, and then we'll just rotate back and forth. And thank you for all of you being here tonight. Really appreciate your time. Floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor Stapleton and council, I would first like to start by thanking council for taking the time to listen and discuss all options to protect our children. My name is Devon Wortman Miller, and I live on Orchid Street. I'm here tonight as a neighbor, but most importantly, as a mom. Most of council has met my son Cade, who just turned one in September. Please picture his face as I continue on. Every day, I watch children walk to school, ride their bikes, or play outside. And every day, I hold my breath because our streets are not safe enough for them. Cars fly by through our neighborhood. There are no speed bumps to slow drivers, no signs reminding people that children live and play here, and only takes one moment, one car, and one second of an attention for a life to change forever. We shouldn't have to wait for a tragedy to act. We shouldn't have to gather here after something happens to say, we knew this was coming. We can do better. We must, we must do it now. Simple safety measures, speed bumps, edge lines, clear signs, and most importantly, entrance sign or closure on Spruce. These aren't luxuries. They're lifelines. They send a message that our city values its children, that we put safety before convenience, that we care enough to protect the most vulnerable among us. Please, let's not let our inaction become something we regret. Let's make our neighborhood a place where parents can breathe easier and children can be children, running, laughing, and growing up safely. Thank you again for listening, and thank you for choosing to stand up for our children.
Thank you. Terrific. Next speaker.
Hi. I also live on Orchid Street. I have since 1983. I do not want to see any changes. I work from my home. I do not see a lot of traffic, and I now and then do see people turning from Zenith onto Orchid. I think that periodic police say speed traps might be appropriate, not on a regular basis. I certainly do not want to see Spruce Street closed. If anything, I would like to see Cypress opened, have that cul-de-sac removed. I believe that Google Maps and your own maps mislabel Spruce and Bayview as avenues. I think that they are actually streets. Zenith and Azure are in fact avenues. And again, I do not think there is a need for speed bumps, and I'm really not in favor of even the level one signage. We have speed, uh, speed limit signs, as you have said. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Treb Heining, Bayview Avenue, 35-year resident. And I want to, first of all, thank all of you for giving us this time today and, and giving your time to hear us all. We live in a neighborhood that is, is not a unique neighborhood in Newport Beach. It is the unique neighborhood in Newport Beach and should be protected and should be looked upon as a jewel of Newport Beach. And all your traffic studies and all the things don't apply to our neighborhood if you lump everything in. Because I don't know how many other neighborhoods that you wake up in the morning to roosters crowing or horses coming down the street. I don't think there's any. And all of these neighbors, I could turn around and name most of them by name. Because we live in a neighborhood where people walk the streets all the time. Why? Because they go down to the Upper Bay. They go down to, go around the bay. I'm a biker, 10.2. That's what you do to go around the bay. We all know each other. It's a very unique neighborhood, and it needs to be safe. I am looked upon as the, by the kids, you know. They ride their bikes around me, and they know that I always yell at them when they're going 30 miles an hour down the street on their e-bikes, you know. But I just ask for speed bumps. I know that blocking off the street is probably going to be out of, out of line, but I think a speed bump, maybe 20 of them, you know. I'm kidding, not 20 of them, yeah. But Neighbor Mike and I here, we also have proclamations from the city because of what we did to bring us into Newport Beach many years ago. I should have brought it tonight. And I apologize for my pedestrian appearance, but thank you for listening.
Yeah. All right. I love, I love the, I love the resident. I love Neighbor Mike. I love the idea of 20 speed, speed cushions. But for the quorum of the council members, we generally do not applaud after comments, so please respect that. But thank you so much for being here. Next speaker, please.
Got it. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Wagon, members of council, Mr. Riley, Mr. Webb. Thank you all for your time and your efforts that you put into this. My name's Ryan Schleger. I live at 20162 Spruce Avenue, and I'm here to protect my daughter Emily. She's five. So what I want to convey to you folks tonight is that there is a problem. And the problem is that we have traffic issues coming from Bristol down Spruce into our neighborhood. Where they go from there is uncertain, but they're certainly taking one of the paths. We also have traffic coming from Mesa up Bayview to get out of Spruce. So as we continue to live in the time of the smartphones and Siri providing shortcuts and direction, directions, this problem only tends to get worse. So I've been on this project for a while, so just to kind of give a little back history, I was one that initially connect, collected signatures for the petition. And I want to point out, if we could bring up the slide, that we actually have 70% approval rating for the Spruce closure on this subsection. So there is a over 70% approval rating, including non-respondents also. So that includes yeses, nos, and non-respondents. Is there a chance we can bring those slides back up so we can take a look at that? And can you, you mind pausing my time?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, perfect. So if we were to tabulate this area that's outlined in red here, if you look at the legend, you'll see that yes to both is green, and yes to Spruce closure is gray or purple. If you tabulate the yeses to the, to both, and yes to Spruce closure, you'll see that out of 164, it provides 72% approval rating. If you then remove the no responses out of the numbers, your approval rating goes over 80%. So just to point that out, that that was our initial petition in that area, and it did exceed the 70% threshold for approval. So we have strong support in that area. We were then asked to continue to, to collect signatures in a greater area on a limited timeframe, and it was accompanied by a mailer, which then gave us the numbers that we have now for the full area.
Time is up.
Okay.
Do you want to wrap it up real quick?
Uh, yeah. So-
Only because you gather a lot of signatures, and I respect that?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah. So what I want to convey to you is, we have a problem. The problem is cut-through traffic. We're looking for a solution. I don't know that the solution is the Spruce closure in the form that it looks like here. The hammerhead option's a good creative option. I know that we have a lot of very intelligent people working in the city, working on council, that have done a lot of creative things in the past. I think that with creative thinking and some collaboration, we can come to a great solution. I'll actually dovetail into the airport presentation from earlier in the meeting, which said, commitment and collaboration equals success. I think we can apply that same thing here. Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Neil. I live on Orchid Street as well. I have seven pages of responses to that study session, but I'm going to kind of freestyle here, and I don't think there's anything that I'm going to say that Jeff or Ryan hasn't said yet. We've been working on it hand in hand. I think, I just want to provide a little bit of context to our neighborhood and its uniqueness. I understand the study session, and I understand city policy. What I don't know, if it's being taken into consideration, and you, you mentioned painted lines in the street and all these items, but we don't have sidewalks. We don't have streetlights. We have horses that roam the neighborhood. So there has to be some kind of deviation or willingness from the city to provide support to this neighborhood. I understand, you know, we did a study session in 2021, two times during COVID. So I, those are, to me, are invalid. The last one was done over two years ago. I guarantee you, those numbers have gone up. You said land development hasn't changed, land use hasn't changed. I, I disagree because there's different businesses that have been put in since then. 700 vehicles may not seem like a lot, but it, it is a lot when you don't have sidewalks and streetlights. I can't take my kids out in the street. I don't, how am I supposed to get them to the park by driving in the street when we have cars, 700 cars going down Orchid Street? We may not have met the 85th percentile, but I also believe when you put out signage and you put out, uh, speed tracking systems, that's going to deter a lot of the, the speeding that's occurring. But on a daily basis, I, I can promise you, there's 30 to 50 cars that are doing over 30 miles an hour. And when you don't have sidewalks and you don't have streetlights, it's, it's very dangerous. And I think the majority of the neighborhood is in support of closing Spruce. And I understand there's some complications with that, but what I would like to see is more options and more avenues explored and not just die at a cul-de-sac. What about a one-way option? What about just allowing traffic out but not in? I think there's definitely some other avenues to explore with the Spruce closure rather than just dying at a cul-de-sac. So one-way option may, may help support that as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Uh, council, mayor, thank you so much. Jeff Roberts, 20262 Spruce Avenue, lifetime resident of Newport Beach, born and raised here, third generation. My kids are fourth generation Newport Beach residents. We live in the greatest city in the world, and Bayview Heights is clearly, in our minds, the greatest community in the world. Everybody knows each other by name. We get out and walk the streets together. I've raised four children there. And I'm thinking about the next generation of kids, the next speaker is an example, with three young babies. We are just highly concerned, clearly, about the safety of our children in this neighborhood. And we're asking that the city continue to pay major attention to the uniqueness of Bayview Heights. So I think the studies speak for themselves, and you can feel the power of us as people coming together. Appreciate Councilmember Wagon coming together with our community to help support this issue. We need more attention paid to it, and hopefully you can see by the force of us being here tonight, we appreciate any and all of your insight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, council. My name is Lucia Pounders, and I live at 20221 Orchid Street, the second house from the end of the runway where cars constantly miss the turn onto Orchard Drive. Every single day, I watch cars fly past my home going 30, 40, and up to 50 miles an hour. Not neighbors, not people who live here, just drivers cutting through our street to save a minute. I have three little children, ages four, two and a half, and one. They know, even at their age, that if they step into the street, they'll be a pancake. That's what we've had to teach them, not to look both ways, not to be careful, but that the street outside our home is going to kill them. That's not how children should grow up. Our neighborhood is filled with young families, bikes, strollers, scooters, horses, et cetera. It's supposed to feel safe, but right now, it feels like we're living on a racetrack. I've stood on my driveway and watched cars miss that turn onto Orchard time and time again. My heart drops when I hear the tires screech. I shouldn't have to hold my breath every time I let my kids out of our front gate. We love this community, Bayview Heights. We want to raise our kids here safely, but that won't happen unless something changes. I'm asking, as a mom, not just a resident, please help us slow these cars down, whether it's speed bumps or barriers, better signage, all of it. Because I will not lose one of my children to someone speeding through a neighborhood they don't even live in. Please, let's fix this before tragedy gives us no choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Nice presentation. Thanks, all of you, on the city council. I'm Jim Roberts, and I'm a 35-year resident on Orchid. So I'm a second generation in that neighborhood. And there's a lot of third generation now, younger, younger people coming in with young kids. And the cars come shooting around that corner at either end, you know, they're on the way home from work or just scooting down the road. I think speed bumps would be a marvelous idea. But the other thing is, I was under the impression when they built that office building, the second office building on Spruce, that that gate was going to be closed and only open for first responders and whatnot. And that gate's been open for 10 years, 12 years, a long time. Somebody completely lost, I think that was on the original approval, that that street, that that parking lot, and all those people come out of that building and just shoot down Orchid Street, you know, five, my gosh, we're out of work, we're out of here, get me out of here. And they're scooting down the road. But we do, we have animals and kids, and it's, uh, would really be good to have at least speed bumps if you can't close Spruce. But thank you for your attention to this.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. I'm Linda Geet, and hello, mayor and council members. I've lived in Bayview Heights for 34 years, and I'm not seeing the same things that some of these neighbors are talking about. It seems, it's a pretty calm neighborhood, I think, except for like the airplanes going over. I think that closing Spruce at Bristol is a very high safety issue because you're going to cut down three accesses down to two, and it could seriously impact the whole neighborhood. You know, we do have airplanes flying over us, so big or small ones could crash. And if Birch was cut off, then we would have no way to get out. Or there could be a fire in the back bay or something. So I don't think that's a good, it's really risky. And then if you close Spruce at Bristol, then you're going to shift this traffic, major traffic, everyone going to the south to try to get out and on the three major streets. And Mesa, Mesa Drive already has a lot of traffic on it. It's a major street, and horses go on that street as well. And then Orchard, Mesa, and Azure are going to be really impacted. Azure, they probably don't even realize how bad it's going to be. Azure, they probably don't even realize how bad it's going to be. Um, and let's see, I think the horses or the houses on Zenith should not have to lose six feet of their yard to have a, um, hammerhead cul-de-sac put in there. I think that's kind of asking a lot. And then, um, let's see. Um, I think maybe twenty-five mile per hour speeds signage would, on the street that I saw up there on the screen would probably be good. And then, um, I was just to the parking gate on, uh, Zenith for that office building is never closed, so maybe that would help. I don't know. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Holly Jarvis. I live at two oh three four one Southwest Cypress Street. I've lived in the neighborhood for over forty years. I've raised my children there. I am not in favor of the Spruce Street closure, even though I have empathy for everybody wanting their kids to be able to play out in the street. But my process of not wanting it is that that then takes a neighborhood that was built with four streets as access points, putting them down to two. So you, you've got the problem of the traffic for the people who don't want the traffic now going on just two streets that it was never designed for. Mesa Drive is a high-speed street. If you think they're speeding down your streets in the other neighborhood, I can promise you Mesa Drive, they are flying down. We, I'm a horse rider and owner, and the horses cross across Orchard and Mesa. It's already a problem. People don't stop at the stop signs. You can tell me that there are people going through, but I'm here to tell you, often it's a resident. We've followed them through, and they are residents who are not stopping at the stop signs. It's a problem for the horses, and if you're talking about now taking traffic from two hundred other houses to now go down those two streets, it's going to be even more of a problem. And just to Ryan's point that the subsection is taking those percentages, saying that they all want yes, the traffic in the streets are not democracy. This, the neighborhood was built for a reason with four ingress and egress, and the fact that the subsection wants one thing, but there is a whole neighborhood that's affected by it. Those are my thoughts. Thank you for taking the time. I appreciate you taking up the everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Council. Hello, Council. I agree with everything she's said there. I do not wish for Spruce to be closed down. I know that it would cause a lot of congestion within our neighborhood. Um, one thing that hasn't been addressed is that there's a lot of people that walk at night, and we're on the street. We have no sidewalks. We have no lights. The only lights I have are what I carry on myself and my flashlights. I walk my dogs at night, and I know a lot of other people do also. And I see traffic coming from Bayview onto Zenith, and I have to dash either back or forward to avoid being hit by a car. So speed bumps on Bayview, absolutely yes, especially when they're approaching corners. They cannot see what's on the other side of the street. They cannot see Zenith from Bayview. They cannot see Orchid from Zenith as they're rounding that corner, and they're zooming around like crazy at night. And I think that someone can come into our neighborhood during the day and drive through, and it's perfectly calm and quiet. Everybody's at work, kids are in school, but as people come home, we do experience all that speed happening. And as far as that four-way stop on Zenith and on Spruce, if cars are speeding through there and they do not see any lights from other cars, they just scoot around the corner. They don't stop. They do not stop. That doesn't mean there aren't cars. There's still people out there. There's still people on bikes. There's still people on foot, and there's still people walking their dogs. And that concerns me. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Bonifetti. I'm a homeowner and live at two three five one Orchid Hill Place. I've lived there since nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, I am vehemently opposed to the closure of Spruce. I just arrived. I apologize. I've been trying to listen to the broadcast my wife's had on the phone. I submitted a letter today because I didn't know if I was going to be in here, but I'll repeat what I said. Some of the things I've already heard, I'm very concerned about an emergency evacuation, if needed, being so close to the bay should there be a fire event. Uh, in my letter, I had hoped that the fire department would have commentary on this as well. I do understand the people that live on Spruce and their desire to turn a public access street into a cul-de-sac. However, that's not how it was designed. I enter on Spruce daily, Spruce daily. Generally, most of the people take Bayview to go down to Mesa. By having a closure on Spruce, in essence, what you're doing is just directing that traffic to other areas. So what you're doing is taking the residents of Spruce and saying, we're going to protect them at the expense of the other ones. There's going to be the same amount of traffic going through the area. I'm very conscious. I drive in the middle of the road because I know there's no sidewalks and that there's children there. I don't see a major impact on there. Very rarely, when I'm exiting on Bayview or entering on Bayview, do I even cross a vehicle. There's just not that much traffic in that area to have this. What it will do, though, should we want to use some of the shopping areas on Bristol, as I stated in my letter, it will mandate that we can not enter off of Spruce, but we would have to go to Jamboree, up to Bristol North and over, where they're building six hundred units, as you well know, and the traffic impact on there is substantial, and it would only get worse, and then we'd have to come down Birch. It's a big nuisance. It's unnecessary. Other traffic, uh, speed regulations I'm in favor of, if need be, to be able to mitigate the traffic and have, provide a safe environment, but the closure is not the answer. If anything, it's the opposite to that. It would create a danger. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Mike Smith. Um, just a couple of quick points. Yes, we would like to take up Mr. Blum's flock camera suggestion. So if you guys could put that together tonight, we would take it. That would help take away our mail theft problem, and we'd love to get that flock system going as soon as possible. Uh, in regards to Bayview Avenue specifically, we have speeders going down our street daily at forty miles an hour to cut through, to go up to and exit out of Spruce at Zenith. We are so lucky right now. I've raised two children there, and I can't tell you how lucky we feel that we have not seen a kid hit, a pet killed in the street, a horse hit. It, it's, it's just crazy to have that amount of cut-through traffic going through our neighborhood. And the same goes for Orchid. It's, it's ridiculous, and we have to do something about it before somebody gets hurt or killed. In regards to the closure of Spruce and Zenith, um, I would like to see the idea floated if we could put in some type of Ballard system there so that in the event of emergencies, emergency personnel could either remove the Ballards or they could be driven over by fire trucks. I think that might be a very simple solution, and it doesn't break the bank. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Council, thank you for taking the time to listen to, um, all of us. Um, my name's Christine Sibaris, and I have owned a property there for many decades. I have a unique perspective in that at sixteen years old, I used to drive through that community commuting. And so I was one of those cross-drivers, and I remember trying to dodge the, uh, chicken that would run out. And unfortunately, it was unsuccessful. But, um, in any event, uh, decades later, the city's grown around this community, and we have ever-increasing, you know, commercial ventures all around that community that have already been approved or are being built right now. And I think the cross-traffic is the issue. Um, this, most of these, uh, homes were built nineteen fifty-two. So there's a lot of seniors that have, um, you know, lived there for, for many decades. They're aging in place. They want to be able to walk in the street. They have walkers or canes or mobility issues. And unlike any other community in Newport, this is a very unique location, which is why I love it. And there's no sidewalks, though. So you've got seniors with mobility issues. You've got a lot of young families that have moved in. They have strollers and young kids. Both of those have lots of pets. We're walking with leashes, and, um, sometimes those pets get out, which I've actually rescued some of those and brought them back to neighbors' homes. Um, we also obviously have the occasional horses, um, on our street, but there's no sidewalks. So if we can make it safer, um, also unlike other communities in the city, it is right at the end of the street on an off-ramp and on-ramp to a freeway. So people are flying. And, um, I think, you know, if we can cut that cross-traffic, that would be extremely helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nan Buie. I've been a resident, um, on Orchid Street for about eleven years. Um, my concern is the traffic that comes from the two big buildings on the, on, in our neighborhood. If we can't close the, um, the Spruce and Bristol, then I, may I request that we close that gate like the gentleman previously suggested, the gates to our neighborhood so that they would come in and out of Bristol to enter, um, their, their workplaces and leave on Bristol instead of using our size streets. And it would cause, you know, it's seven hundred cars on Orchid, and it's dangerous. I have two boys. I walk my dogs, and I'm always concerned with people speeding because they're late or something or another. Um, so that's what I wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Beth Darling, a thirty-one-year resident. I've had the honor to live on both Azure and Bayview right now. I'm not going to talk about our streets. You've heard a bunch. They're all right. We are unique. I drive every day, twice a day, to get my daughter to the NAC from my house, to and from. I have the choice of going the shorter route of Santiago with speed bumps. I have the choice of the longer route of Galaxy, no speed bumps. Kill two birds with one stone. If you put in the speed bumps, you lose the amount of traffic because I will go on the street with no speed bumps, even though it's longer, and you slow people down. So with that option, you restrict the traffic like I do. Go to another place that doesn't have it, and you miss those very annoying speed bumps, and you slow people down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Kent Snyder. I live on Cypress Street. I've been there twenty years. Uh, I am only going to say a couple of things because everyone has said everything. One, I am totally against closing off the Spruce Street, uh, connection to Bristol. And two, some of the people have said they've raised their children. There's never been any child hit, cat hit, anything. Why? Because people don't speed there. I drive there every day, and they don't speed. And you cannot turn the corner at thirty miles an hour. Absolutely. Pay attention to the data that your staff, particularly Mr. Riley, whom I commend, have gathered for you. Act on the data, not the emotion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. If there's anyone else who wants to speak, let's continue the line. We got two microphones. Thank you.
My name is Linda Newsom. I live at two oh two oh one Bayview Avenue, and I may take the prize. I have lived there for just short of fifty years, raised my children there. One thing that has not been spoken of and that I really appreciate, uh, the city thinking about is the possibility of the edge lines. You know, we don't have, um, sidewalks. I was on a committee to bring sidewalks, um, forty years ago. That didn't go very far. And now I'm happy not to have them. But the edge lines would be a huge help, and I think they're relatively inexpensive. I would love to see that happen. The speed limit decals on the roads would also be useful, and possibly even the raised median to announce that people are entering a residential neighborhood at the corner of, uh, Spruce and Zenith. I think that would keep a number of people trying to get through mistakenly. The other suggestions, the closing of Spruce, the speed bumps, I just am opposed to them. I know that people do speed on our streets. Very often, it's residents that speed on our streets. But the data said twenty-nine miles an hour as opposed to twenty-five. It doesn't sound like as serious a problem as some have been making it, uh, to me. Closing Spruce will increase the traffic on Bayview and Orchid, and I can see no reason to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Um, I just wanted to echo the sentiment of the folks that do want to close, uh, Spruce. I think that the traffic study, respectfully, was a, there was a monumental omission not to state that there are no sidewalks in these streets because twenty-nine miles per hour, when there's no sidewalk or area to seek refuge, is much different than twenty-nine miles an hour when you're on the street because you have nowhere else to walk or ride your bike. In fact, my kids don't even ride their bike in the neighborhood because there's no sidewalks. So, um, I want to echo again that Spruce closure, I think, would also increase property values. I think if you told people that were opposed to it, that we're going to put in sidewalks and take away whatever eight, ten feet of your property, that they might change their tune also. Um, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, um, I'm Lori Kelly, and I live at two zero two five two Bayview Avenue. Lived there for twenty-one years, raised two boys. Um, I will tell you, there is an issue. We are unique. We do have horses. My son was on a horse. I turned it in the neighborhood to follow that. He was two years old, um, in a, in a therapy session, and a car pulled up, followed the car, pulled up, honked behind the horse with a two-year-old child on it. I then proceeded to follow that car to get the ID to call the police, and it left our neighborhood. It was not our neighborhood. So that is not incorrect that all of those cars are in our neighborhood. Those cars are not all in our neighborhood, and with this, um, planned surf park, there is going to be more traffic going through that neighborhood because of where are they going to go afterward? They're going to go and want to go get food. Where are they going to circle back? They're going to circle back to go back home down, um, our streets. So there is another consideration that is not part of the study, and that is the increased traffic as a result of these changed, um, plans that the city has, including the additional housing that you've just, um, approved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no more public comments, I'll bring it back up here. Uh, Councilmember Grant.
Okay, thank you all for illuminating this very, um, interesting topic. Obviously, thank you to Councilmember Wagon for taking the big lift and coordinating all this with our, um, very capable staff. And there's just a lot to think about here, and I think all this information is sort of been a, a huge benefit in, um, understanding exactly what the community needs are and, and what the city can provide. It's, it's most striking that this is a unique neighborhood, and, and it was something that was annexed as is. And I guess, um, not having the streetlights and not having the sidewalks, it does sort of, um, change my perspective. I hadn't, when I was preparing for this, I wasn't really thinking about it in that context. I had a couple of follow-up questions. One, is there a homeowners association in this community or is it, um, independent of that?
I don't believe there's a formal homeowners association here.
Okay, so the, um, community would not have access to our, our, um, program for flock cameras that are available to homeowners, to homeowner associations to, um, coordinate with the police department?
No, your policy, your type about your pilot, pilot program for the flock, which goes for about another year, requires them to have a formal homeowners association in an agreement to do with.
Okay, I wasn't sure if there was one. Um, um, just taking a look at a few of my notes, we're looking at closing Spruce and just kind of stream of consciousness. I'm wondering if it would be of value to talk to the two businesses that are really on, would be affected by the closure of Spruce, obviously most affected by any kind of eminent domain or taking of their property. But I'm not only talking about that, I'm wondering if they have any context to provide here. A couple of the homeowners mentioned there perhaps was an agreement to keep gates closed at certain hours, and I don't know if, if we, um, understand exactly what that means or how that affects even the traffic flow, if there's more traffic coming out of those gates. Obviously, they're probably going out to Bristol and not coming into the community. But I just wonder if that's maybe a next step that we can take in, you know, kind of coming full circle on this is connecting with those two property managers on those two larger properties. So just a thought. Adding sidewalks is sort of an interesting concept. I, I know that, that's probably a very controversial, just as controversial, if not more controversial than the, the, um, speed cushions. But if we're talking about safety for children, I, I can't think of a safer environment than adding sidewalks and streetlights. And again, that opens up another whole inquiry, but, um, And again, that opens up another whole inquiry, but certainly something for us to think about. I don't know what the amount of room is, how wide those streets are, and whether that's even something to consider. And again, I realize that's a whole other can of worms, and there'd be a lot of pro and con with that, but a lot of people brought up the fact that there are no sidewalks and the need for safe spaces for our children, and that's sort of a community standard is having sidewalks. So just another thing to consider. I appreciate the way that staff has broken out these level one, level two, and level three options. Certainly, the level one options are, you know, something that we could easily implement, and I'm in favor of. I do think it's compelling that there are certain streets that we're very much in favor of speed cushions. I know that those are very controversial, but if we have, I think one of the speakers said that there were sufficient amount of homeowners that wanted a certain type of improvement, and I'm not sure if we actually did meet that criteria, if there would be some sort of opposite opinion on that. But if we have met the criteria, I would like to know if that is actually true. And finally, you know, I'm looking forward to more discussion on this with staff relating to the questions that people, you know, brought up so that we can kind of, again, come full circle, tie it up. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Wagen.
Yeah, I think there's also a planning commission hearing that's scheduled to discuss the business that they're referring to and their gate, so that's something to come up. They're asking it for it to be open. It's supposed to be closed, but if you drive down Bristol and you're a business owner on those parcels, your deliveries come off of Bristol. And a couple of the way those buildings are situated is the hang, overhang is too low, and UPS truck can't come in, so they're coming in through the back. So that's what their discussion is, but that's supposed to be coming before the planning commission at some point soon. Yeah, look, I hear kind of some of the concerns, obviously with staff, but a fair amount of residents. I just, I just don't see the consensus on Spruce. I don't want to say that I want to give up on Spruce. I think that, you know, we can continue to receive ideas and feedback moving forward that maybe comes up with a one-way, maybe some type of other concepts that just I can't grasp. I don't think any of the public has quite grasped. The hammerhead concept is, I'm confused looking at it, so I just, I can't get there on, on supporting that. But I, I do think level one, I think we can do without, obviously, even a council decision, but I think we should go forward with that. There was a question that came up during our meeting about slurry seal. That project is coming up soon in that neighborhood, whether as to do it after the slurry seal or before. I think doing it before, while it might cost a little bit of money, it kind of gives a test run for the residents to see. And then if they come back and say, this is horrible, this is not a good idea, then when we do the slurry, we'll just continue on and, and leave it as it was. I think it's a good practice to have the lines, to have the numbers on the street, but if we do it before, it gives an opportunity to see it, and then the slurry seal comes in. And then if we're receiving negative feedback, we can just modify that or not. As far as the speed bumps, I didn't, beyond maybe one or two of the public speaking tonight, hear no speed bumps. We don't want them. It sounded like they're willing to make use of them and it would be supported. I do think too, on the petitions, if there are folks that said specifically, yes, I want a Spruce Street closure, if you were re-asking and saying Spruce is off the table, do you want speed bumps? I guarantee you there's some on here that probably would change from yes, 100%, I want Spruce closure, to say, I'll take the speed bumps because they think that public safety is important. So I do think those numbers would change. I would actually consider maybe even a speed bump on, let's see, page number seven, it's easier to see, but it's out of the red box, and it's on Orchard coming into Orchid. I could justify throwing a speed bump there. I'm not sure what staff would think if that area between Orchid and Cypress is too narrow of an area to put a speed bump, but that would be a deterrent coming into the neighborhood of the red boxed area in the first place. But I would be supportive. It looks like there's enough to get at least one, if not two, on Orchid on the speed bump based on the map that I'm looking at as far as those that support it. Spruce, it appears there is a little questionable as far as those that wanted it and didn't want it or wanted 100% Spruce closure, so I feel like there's some wiggle room to work there. I think with some additional outreach of the public, I think you could get consensus that, that two could go there. And then it seems like on Bayview, there's definitely room for one spot that has it, maybe questionable on a second spot. I don't know what staff's thought is of phasing speed bumps, if you could take those that we know are guaranteed, sick, because kind of the benchmark, right, is three on one side of the street, three on the other side of the street, and then you place the speed bump in the middle of those six homes. That kind of gives you your okay affirmative from the neighborhood that they support it. So I would think there's areas there that I could justify that. Maybe additional outreach could get you over the hump for the full layout of them, and maybe that's something we could direct staff to say. We could do a series of speed bumps, but phase it in based on the residents' perspective. So I, I think that, that is pretty much the monument issue. We kind of should, you know, maybe continue to study, and I don't know if we just, when we come back, if this, if there's enough votes here to make this become a council item, discuss what would be supportive there. Looks like that could cost some money to put a sign that says, welcome to the neighborhood versus something that creates a little more of a slowdown in the middle of Zenith and Spruce. So I, I don't want to make a presumption on that without really getting a little additional feedback if that's something that, that would be supportive. I have endless amounts of these little notes that I've written here, and I'm probably going to miss a few things, but street lighting came up. Dave, if you want to just touch on that, it's an expense that the residents have to create an assessment district for. That's not something that the general fund could fund for streetlights. Am I correct on that?
Typically, they're formed by an assessment district. As you know, a lot of our tracks in Newport Beach, like Corona Del Mar, Newport Shores, Newport Heights, none of them have streetlights. And as Councilmember Blom said, we had this discussion on Tustin, and in my years here, it seems to be a 50/50. Getting streetlights would require a petition, and we'd look for the residents to usually start with an interest item to see they want to do it, then we'd go through the petition process like an assessment district. It's usually self-funded, and you could, I'm just guessing, 10 to 15,000 probably at least per home. The difficulty is too, is where the light goes. No one wants it in front of their house, but we'd have to have that part of the petition process. It could be done. To your question, typically, the city could fund it out of general fund. It's, it's a cost, but most people fund it out of a streetlight assessment district. That's how they're typically funded. Or they're put in with the developer, but that's how we pay it. We, since I've been here my 17 years, we've never funded putting in a streetlights from the general fund. It's usually on the residents.
Right, right. And I think those that had paid into it over the years, that, that, they probably would say, well, I had to pay for it, I had to create an assessment. Why do they get a free pass? And that's kind of the policy decisions we'd, we'd have to ask. But, you know, if the residents want to pursue that, I think you should have that conversation as far as yourselves to see if you're willing to accept that assessment. And then lastly, just the flock cameras. I think what Councilmember Blom was saying, I think some of the residents paid to have personal flock cameras in there, and there became an issue with the encroachment that code enforcement cited them. A few of them went off the city property and onto, onto their own private property, and then that funding stopped. But when we designed the flock camera system, we thought that that was part of the system. So when it wasn't part of the system because they were, the funding dried up, then I think that kind of left a little void in the neighborhood. So I, I would like to have those cameras added if council agrees. So level one, yes. Speed bumps, yes, perhaps in a phase portion. Discuss maybe the slurry seal if we, we could do it now and then, and then give it a test run. Study that additional maybe speed bump on Orchard. And no to the closure, but leaving the door open for possible ideas in the future to see if it's warranted. Maybe throw another traffic study after things are implemented to see if things have calmed down or if things continue to progress. So that would be my, my feedback.
Okay. Councilman Blom.
Great, I'll just give a quick rap, and I want to thank everyone for coming out. This is honestly the idea of why we do study sessions. Sometimes it's nice when council gets to talk on their own and make ideas, and then we get to bring it out and hear kind of what happens when it affects your community as a whole. I think the long and short of what I've heard tonight is that we're trying to develop a neighborhood that has been there forever, and we're trying to make it more part of the Newport community. And I don't think anyone up here would disagree with that sentiment. We, we love neighborhoods in Newport. They, they're what make us who we are. Doesn't ever mean that we're all going to agree on everything we want there, and that's really the job of this body is to try to figure out what the best things we can do that are at the largest consensus for everybody. That being said, I think that there is fairly general consensus to try some speed calming measures, and since this is study session, and a lot of you are looking for closure tonight, I'm sorry, it won't happen. We're going to be directing staff to bring us back something so that we can actually take a vote on it. So the input, while it's very, very important, we don't always get closure at the end. The idea of closing the street, I'm just typically generally against. I like ingress and egress, but I'd be willing to look at other options. I do really like the idea that it becomes a neighborhood though, and with some of the signs and mitigation members, I'm, or measures, I'm a big fan of those. I really love the idea that this is something we treasure in Newport. It's one of the only equestrian neighborhoods we have. It's a great place to raise a family. You know, I'm going to stop short of recommending sidewalks, even though sidewalks sometimes are great. I don't even want to get into that with any of you, but that's wonderful. Maybe if there's a light, a light study, Dave, very, very light study on how many parking spaces we would get rid of, and if anybody would ever even want something like that, I'd be willing to entertain that. But end of the day, we're all just a very large place with a lot of little villages and a lot of ideas that come together, and I look at this as another village, and I am happy to support it any and which way that I can for you guys to find the community you're looking for. So thank you all for coming out, taking the time, and for us hearing your opinions.
Okay. Any other comments by council?
Okay, I would just, just finalize, thank you for coming out. I love Newport Beach for all the unique villages and characteristics, the natural beauty of our city, but it's truly the people like you that make the contribution to our community that make us Newport Beach. And I've been looking for the most unique neighborhood in the city. I think we found it. So congratulations to all of you for living there. What a great representation of Newport Beach. I'm fully supportive of level one calming measures. I would also entertain speed cushions along Orchid. It seems like that's where a vast majority of maybe some of the young families live. A lot of people coming in and out through that, cutting through. I would not be in favor of closing Spruce, given all the data we looked at. And Orchard could be interesting to put a speed cushion there potentially, but I'm not sold on that or married to that. But I, I think there are some unique situations here, especially in Orchid, where we could slow some cars down with level one and maybe some speed cushions. And then if those are successful, if the neighborhood comes out and wants more, we can have that conversation. But I don't have overwhelming data showing Spruce or Bayview or any other street that really is demanding that, but it seems like Orchid is all in on that. So I don't know if that gives you guys any direction or crystal clear.
If I could give you some, I've taken a lot of it here, but maybe if I could just throw something out, if we want to bring something back. It seems like everybody's in favor of level one. I'm thinking the neighborhood would like that too. We'd do the legends and the edge lines.
Everyone go level one. Seems like, okay.
I hear at least one speed bump on Orchid, maybe two, but I think we'd have to look at that. Kevin could look at that. I think we could try that. I hear maybe the median on Spruce as an entry monument. And talk about the gate closure, that's the commercial property. It's actually too over because of the overhead, as Councilmember Wagen said, it might be. But there may be a condition, and we can check with planning on why that's open, but if it's surely going through a development process, we could maybe change that. As a start, we could bring something like that back, and then we could monitor and see how it goes, and if we wanted to add more cushions in the future, or however you want to do it, we could try that. It would, does that sound about a good start?
And flock.
And the flock cameras, I think.
Oh, flock, yes. How many, how many are we talking? Up to the police department?
I think there's three entrances, three cameras.
Three cameras on the city program.
Everyone's getting flock.
Yeah, and I would just add, I, I don't want to end on that just one street. I, I do think that if the residents can go back out and talk to some of those based on the graphic that we have, they, they know, and, and we can reshare that with them, but they can go and, and say, yes, I may want speed bumps now that I know that Spruce closure isn't going to happen. It is not the consensus here. So I think if they come back to us by the time this item comes forward and there's consensus for additional speed bumps on those two other streets, I think we should accept that, that, that's what they want to do now, not, not phase it. I'm happy to phase it if they can't get that and, and keep it as an open book. But I think that, I, I know that some of them will want to go talk to each other and say, you know what, I didn't support it, but now that I know that Spruce isn't closed, I'd be willing to support the speed bumps for my street. So I think leaving that open-ended is, is helpful as we come into that discussion for the, for the actual item.
Okay, so I think with the direction that we can take a straw vote on is level one calming measures, speed cushions at least on Orchid, and.
Median, opening median, flock cameras.
And flock cameras.
Look at the commercial gate issue.
And look at the gate. I think there's a consensus on that. Do you guys raise your hand in support of that? Okay. Seven zero? Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you ever for coming out on this item. Much appreciated.
Yes, and thank you, council, for the patience on this.
All right, well, I don't have to wait till 4:30 to start the regular council meeting, so here we go. Okay, I'm going to reconvene the meeting now. The start time is 5:46. Roll call, Madam Clerk, please.
All members are present. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Now we're going to have the invocation from Julie Holdaway, Chief Strategy and Learning Officer for Mirage Jewish Community Center of Orange County. Thank you for your patience.
I wanted to thank you, first of all, for inviting me. I've had the opportunity to speak at other cities' council meetings and certainly did not receive the warm welcome that we've gotten from the Newport Beach City Council. So thank you for that. At the Mirage ACC, which is in upper Newport coast, we don't actually re-talk about scripture or Torah. We do community building. We live, leave praying and scripture and Torah to our rabbis and our scholars. Rather, we do the work that I think the Newport Beach City Council does in building community. And we're honored to share a purpose of making sure our children are safe, making sure our families thrive, and making sure our seniors connected. So thank you again for having me, and so we can celebrate that shared purpose. This weekend, my invocation rewrote itself, and there's one word, one auspicious word that happened this weekend, and that is shalom. Shalom means welcome. Shalom means hello. Shalom means goodbye, and shalom means peace. And we work hard at, with our actions and our words and our dreams of ensuring there's peace in our communities and in our world. And we're happy again to share that with the Newport Beach City Council and all the communities that make up Newport Beach. So may peace dwell within our walls and within our hearts. May we be instruments of peace, spreading generosity, kindness, and light in our homes, our businesses, our community, and our world. Shalom to my friends.
Well done. Thank you. Birthday girl, Councilmember Weber, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now it's time for city council announcements and oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilwoman Wagen, do you have any announcements or reports?
Yes, just two brief ones. As a member of the vector control that the council has chosen me to represent, there has been a significant uptick in West Nile virus detected in parts of the county, not here in Newport Beach, but in Garden Grove, Orange, Huntington Beach areas. So just be cognizant of being out and about and where you're repellent. On Friday, the State of the Orange County Sanitation District, another position that this council has entrusted me with, is having a State of the District luncheon. So that's at the district headquarters in Fountain Valley. All of you are intended, invited to attend. Thank you very much.
Okay. Councilmember Bartow.
No report.
Grant?
No report.
Blum?
Nothing.
Weber?
Nothing.
Blamette?
Wow, is this backwards day? I'll reiterate, as the mayor alluded to, happy birthday to Councilmember Weber. I attended my OCOG board meeting, the Fifth District OCTA Mayor's Forum kickoff of our first Newport Beach Foundation DCP Fall Class, grand reopening of the CDM Farmers Market in the CDM Commercial Corridor Community Meeting. And I also want to let everyone know that our first newly restructured Aviation Committee meeting is this Monday, October 20th at 5:00 PM right here in the community room. And we are looking forward to welcoming all of our new members, as well as welcoming back Jack Strandberg. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. Just a couple of quick announcements.
Just a couple of quick announcements. This Thursday marks the opening night of the Newport Beach Film Festival. So if residents and members of the community have an opportunity to get out, there's a lot of good films that are happening, so that's great. Congratulations to the Friends of Oasis for another successful rummage sale. I did attend the American Legion. They hosted a sailing event for visually impaired. So there are 100, at least 100 people who came out and went sailing on our beautiful harbor and into the ocean, which was a wonderful thing to see. The volleyball invitational, the tournament the last week on the peninsula in front of Black East Beach right there, was really well-attended. I think a highlight event, a marquee event in our community. Terrific professional volleyball played on our beaches here in Newport and broadcasted around the world. So congrats to the Eagle Four guys for putting that together, the Pyle family and everyone else. And congratulations to Cronedale High School, Battle of the Bay. They beat Newport Harbor, so congratulations to them in a well-fought battle. So, yeah. Okay, now is the time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. The speaker, obviously the buzzer's not working, so our city clerk will manage that. So, Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Okay, terrific. We'll now proceed with public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Please note that members of the public will still have an opportunity to comment on agenda items under consent public hearings, current business, and closed session later in the meeting provided. They do not offer comments at this time. Mr. Mosher.
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council, thank you. My name is Jim Mosher. I was pleased to hear that the Aviation Committee meeting is going to be meeting next week on Monday. As a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee, I want to let the public know also that the following night in the same location, the community room, at 6 o'clock, the city will be holding a general plan open house, which is a chance for everybody in the community to provide comments and learn about what's going on with updating our general plan. And if they can't make that meeting the next night, Wednesday, next Wednesday at 6:30, there will be a virtual open house. So I think those are important meetings to announce. And speaking of aviation, since I have a tiny bit of extra time here, and we heard about the airport at John Wayne Airport, I don't know how many people are familiar with the history of aviation in Newport Beach itself. Those who visit the Baobab Pier will notice a little monument there. It's the original location of a seaplane operation going from the pier here to Catalina and back. I'm not sure how many seaplanes later operated in Newport itself in the harbor. I think there might have been a few. But what I wanted to let you know is before the city had an aviation committee, long before that, you're probably not aware, the city had an airport committee. And this was in 1929, and you can find this in the city council minutes. And the purpose of the council airport committee, in those days, every city wanted to have an airport of their own, and that was to locate a, find a location for the Newport Beach Airport. And the Exchange Club, which existed back then, recommended to the council that a logical place for an airport in Newport Beach would be just north of Lido Isle. They thought the channel there would make a great place for landing seaplanes. And at that time, undeveloped land, which we now call Mariner's Mile, would be a good place for landing the non-seaplane airplanes. The idea for a Newport Beach airport, I think, died after a few months, in part because Mr. Eddie Martin had the field up in Irvine Ranch, which turned into the Orange County Airport later, said that those locations were not feasible. So I think he was instrumental in killing the idea. We may have had an airport of our own, where we now have Mariner's Mile, and that's interesting factoid. You'll find that in the city council minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Great history lesson. Any other comments on agenda or non-agenda items?
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Maria Stinson, City Employees Association President. Joining me today is Jaime Gonzalez from Layuna Local 777. I am here to present a letter on behalf of the association in regards to our ongoing negotiations. You'll receive this via email, so you have it for your records. I am here to respectfully request that the city council grant the city's negotiation team full authority to reach an agreement on the proposed 2025 to 2028 CEA contract. CEA met with the city's negotiation team on June 6, 2025, to formally present our first proposal. Since that time, we've made some progress in discussions. However, there's still more work to be done to reach a fair and timely resolution. Several of our items, including those with minimal or no fiscal impact, remain under review more than three months later. During recent meetings, the CD negotiation team stated that the city can't afford our proposal and remarked something to the effect of the early bird gets the worm and you're late to the party. Based on those conversations, I believe what the team meant is that they do not have the authority to move beyond the initial allocation of funds that the city council provided to them, to the third-party law firm. That limitation has hindered progress for our group. Newport Beach continues to remain a AAA credit-rated city, which is the highest that a city can earn and has held that distinction since at least 2019 in our research. Each, each year, revenues exceed expenditures, resulting in a healthy surplus and a clear record of financial strength. The city's strong fiscal position demonstrates that there is flexibility to support a fair and competitive agreement for CEA employees. Many of the benefit enhancements we requested are already existing in other city bargaining agreements or are necessary to maintain competitiveness with comparator cities. These proposals are not excessive. They are balanced and designed to promote employee retention, recruitment, and internal equities across the departments. Throughout negotiations, the law firm representing the city has repeatedly said that they need to keep us under a certain percentage in total compensation. While we understand the need for guidelines, using a fixed percentage cap across all units does not consider that the average salary in our unit is lower than other groups. If you look at the dollar amount per employee, even at the same percentage, the dollar amount cost per employee is significantly less for our unit. CE members are the backbone of the city operations, providing essential public services, maintaining facilities, managing records, supporting community programs, and assisting residents. A fair agreement will strengthen the workforce stability and preserve high standards of service our community expects from us. For these reasons, we respectfully request that the city council grant full authority to the city's negotiation team to continue working towards an equitable and timely resolution that reflects the city's financial capacity and values, the contributions of its general employees. Our next meeting with the city is on Monday. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comments on agenda and non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none. We've got an A1 item, so we have a matter that Councilmember Bartow has brought forward. Per city council policy, A1, council members may bring forward a matter for consideration. And if approved by a straw vote on the council, of the council, staff will return with a report on the matter at a later meeting. The item for consideration is the following. It's on your screen. Consideration of amendments to the Newport Beach Community Code to enhance enforcement of bicycle safety by prohibiting operation of a bicycle, e-bicycle in an unsafe manner, yada, yada. Don't let them read this whole thing, right? We got it? We can all read. Okay, great. Okay, we'll go to public comments. I'll take public comments on this A1 item. Are there any public comments? Okay, seeing none. I'll bring it back here. Show of hands, all in favor of the proposed consideration?
Motion passes unanimously.
Unanimously, okay, great. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on the consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion, items one through 15. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wagon, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar conflicts to announce related to items one through 15?
Yes, I'm going to be a no vote, but I don't need to pull it on item number three. And then I'd like to pull item number eight off the consent calendar. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bartow.
There's nothing I'd like to pull.
What's that?
It's fine, it is.
Nothing? Okay, sorry. Councilmember Grant?
None.
Councilmember Blum?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Weber?
None.
Mayor Protem Kleinman?
None.
Okay, and I have none myself. So do we have a motion?
I move the consent calendar excluding item number eight, which has been pulled by Councilmember Wigan, and noting amendment to item number one, the minutes, as well as Councilmember Wigan's vote no on item number three.
Okay, is that a second? Councilmember Grant? Okay. Well, now, public comments on consent calendar items one through 15, except for number, item number eight, since it's been pulled. Any public comments on these items? Okay, seeing none. Oh, public comment? Go ahead. Are you sure? We've got time. Okay. Sorry about that, I didn't see you stand up. Okay. Anyone else have any public comments on these items? Okay. Any additional council comments? Okay, let's vote. Okay, terrific. All right, item number eight, requested from, to be pulled from the consent calendar, so.
Mayor, just to, we need to read the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry, my apologies, yeah.
Ordinance number 2025-26, an ordinance of the City Council of Newport Beach, California, amending Chapter 6.25 Regulation of Smoking in Public Areas and adding Chapter 6.30 Prohibition of Sale and Distribution of Flavored Tobacco Products to Title VI, Health and Sanitation of the Newport Beach Municipal Code relating to smoking and tobacco sales. Ordinance number 2025-27, an ordinance of the sale of the City Council of Newport Beach, California, adding Chapter 6.40 Prohibition of Sale, Distribution, and Use of Nitrous Oxide to Title VI, Health and Sanitation of the Newport Beach Municipal Code relating to nitrous oxide sales. Ordinance number 2025-28, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, California, amending Section 10.04.010 Drinking in Public of Chapter 10.04, Intoxicating Liquor of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to the possession of alcoholic beverages. Ordinance number 2025-29, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, California, adding Section 11.04.085 Prohibiting the Use of Electric Bicycles and Similar Devices on the Newport Elementary School Playground, and amending Section 11.04.130 Exemption of Chapter 11.04 Parks, Park Facilities, and Beaches of the Newport Beach Municipal Code. And finally, ordinance number 2025-30, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, California, amending Section 2.12.110 of Chapter 2.12 Administrative Departments of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to include education and enforcement-related provisions as a function of the Recreation and Senior Services Department. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, how could I miss that? Well done. Okay, we've had, we'll start with item number, agenda number eight, that was removed by Councilmember Wagon. Councilmember Wagon, would you like a staff report on this item?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And really just kind of want to touch on a few things. You know, we made a purchase of a property at Dub Street. You know, that was a couple of years back. And then this is an ad hoc to kind of discuss what to do with that site, I think, and, you know, have a little more dialogue either amongst us ourselves as a council or, you know, create an ad hoc. We've been creating ad hocks since I've been on this council pretty significantly, you know, in a process that's either two or three members of this council, and then that's it. And then recently, we approved an ad hoc that had, at the Castaway site, members of different committees that we have with one member of the public. And just kind of curious, you know, different styles of ad hocks, why to have one that's in the previous manner versus the most current manner of, and then this one being slightly different by having four members of the public, versus maybe just having the existing style of, that we've been using and then have a study session. I mean, there's going to be some significant cost, obviously, with creating a new police station. Is it necessary? Do we need it? You know, PD needs to, you know, inform the public, too, that that facility on Santa Barbara is getting dated. So I think it's a complex item, I understand, but it, to me, it's almost like, let's get it moving and up into a study session discussion versus, you know, going through a whole process where we have to have, you know, applications and have a community input, which I think is great, but I think that can be done in a study session versus hammering out some of the details, you know, in a traditional form, an ad hoc. So, you know, just kind of looking for, you know, maybe an update as to the reason why we've, what we're trying to accomplish here.
Sure, happy to. Simone Georgis, Assistant City Manager. So the, our existing police station is slated for replacement in 2032, so that gives us about six years from now. If we're going to replace a police station, we're really going to have to look at building it in another location, because you can't build it on the same location, because you can't really take a police department and put them in temporary trailers while the new facility is being built. So you've got to select a site, build a site, and have everybody move into the new facility, and then you can deal with the existing site. This all takes an enormous amount of time, especially when you're dealing with a police station. Our police station, our police staff is healthy, they're kind of busting at the seams, the parking is a little tight, they're going to need a replacement for that station. We've got to start today to start having that dialogue, that discussion about where do you want to put the police station, and what is going to be the size and the logistics and the cost of doing all this. And so, and then we're going to have to raise the money and the funds about for that, plus what is the design? What's that? How does it meet all of our needs? And is everybody satisfied with where the location is going to be? That's going to take us, but we, for, to actually have the police staff move into a new facility from today, maybe six to seven years from today, they actually move into a new facility. So for the council, it's really your discretion and your prerogative of how you want to go about with this process. Councilmember Mayor Stapleton had an A1 to form an ad hoc committee. That ad hoc committee is three council members and four residents. This is part of your city council policy that you're allowed to form these working groups, these ad hoc committees, but when you have council members and residents together, those are subject to the Brown Act. And there's a benefit to that. That gives you the opportunity to have a working group of council members and residents binked together to solve some of these issues and these problems and try to problem-solve with the best approach. You don't have to do it that way. You could have, form a separate ad hoc committee of just three council members, and that's a working group that will work on this issue. Or you could form no committee and just have the entire city council work on this issue, where staff will come and present at a study session and agendize the item and have this broad dialogue. So it's really the council's prerogative which way you want to do. Sometimes you want to, because there's so much work, you may want to offload to an ad hoc committee, you may want to offload to an ad hoc committee of council members and residents. And it's just kind of pushes the work on a working group to do it that way, or the councils can say, we just want to handle it at your level. Ad hoc committees that are subject to the Brown Act actually are work for staff, because we have to do the agenda, the minutes, posting, and make sure we have the facility of the room and do all the, all the noticing for those ad hoc meetings. But it's up to the council's prerogative how you want to approach this. Okay, Councilmember Blum?
Thank you, Mr. Georgis. It's very helpful. And, you know, I'd like to say, you know, we've been working on this for quite some time, from the very beginning of my council term, which has seemed like forever ago. Thank you. At least I got one laugh back there. That's good. No, it's been wonderful, but, you know, from when we were selecting sites in the airport district and then getting a lot of comments back from residents that that might not work, and we've started looking at others, and where do we go from here? And sometimes, you know, as, as I've kind of worked through this in my own mind and talked to other shareholders in the community, I think we have a lot of work in front of us. And sometimes it is very difficult to get a lot of work done on a very regularly scheduled meeting, usually about twice a month at best. Sometimes deals need to be made, and then you need to daylight them, and that can often work better. In this meeting, or in this in particular piece, you know, I've talked to some people in the last week that we really need to work fast and efficiently to secure what we need. And a lot of these become major property deals, major adjustments, major dollar components. And a lot of these become major property deals, major adjustments, major dollar components, you know, what, what my goal would be in all of this is that when I look at the beauty of our current city hall, I love it, I think it's a testament to what was built in Newport. And I hate nothing more than the bond payments we make on it, because they greatly affect what we get to spend for the residents of this community. And we're still making those payments. I envision a deal where that doesn't happen. Where we find an easier way through this, where we have the assets that work to build something that is a testament to the city and what we do. And sometimes I really love the ability for us to meet nonstop. My wife hates it, but it's necessary sometimes to meet five times in a week, to go back and forth, to make sure you have that versatility. So, I, I enjoy the idea that we get the input now. I don't necessarily love the idea that the input starts at the very beginning, before we have any concrete pieces to play with. I, it's really hard to build a restaurant if I don't have a site, if I already start asking people what they want on the menu. And that's kind of how I feel like this piece is now presented. I don't want to know what they want on the menu, I, I want to know where we're going to put something, what the financing looks like, and if we have the ability to do it. And then I'm willing to farm that out and start getting the input from everyone else, but. So, I would, I'm in full agreement with the mayor on the people that he was originally looking to put forth for the council. And I would love for those three people to keep moving forth on this project, to bring some concrete ideals forward. And then, I think, just as we saw recently, we had a very vibrant study session on something way less important, with a huge amount of public input. And that would be my hope, is that we could go to a council-only ad hoc with three of our members, and then we would roll this out into a study session where we get a huge amount of input, and staff has been nothing but amazing, reaching out to people, getting their input on other pieces. I think that also satiates a huge amount of staff time, and gets us moving a little quick, more quickly on a project that is, time is really, truly of the essence, and that was imparted heavily on me today. So, I, I would really like it if we could move forward with that piece. So, thank you.
Okay, any other comments on council? Councilmember Grant?
Okay, I understand the comments that were made by Councilmember Wigan and Councilmember Blum, and I think they're very valid, as well as the staff comments from our Assistant City Manager. I am usually very in favor of a lot of transparency. I think in this instance, we're making an incredible investment in, in a very important asset to our entire community, and I do value, highly value the community input. I would say that we have a very robust group of people in our community that have been involved in our city politics from a lot of different levels, former mayors, former council members, committee members, people that have been on boards and committees and commissions. So, we do have a great resource in our community that could share about this. We do have sufficient amount of time, as Assistant City Manager has mentioned, we're about six years out, so it's not that we don't have a little bit of time to spend on this. I, I do value, highly value staff time, and I think that that's a valid comment that we, you know, when we are complying with the Brown Act, that we do have additional noticing and procedures, and it does hold up and add staff time, but in certain instances, that's extremely valuable. So, I find that to be the case here. If I look at it from the other angle, I am not opposed to having no ad hoc committee at all, having staff put together a package of exactly what we need, what we're looking at, and bringing it to a very robust study session here in the council chambers. So, I would look at either end of the spectrum as an appropriate way to move forward. But if we are going to have an ad hoc, I do highly value having community input on this very important asset that will cost a lot and be very instrumental going forward in our city in providing public safety.
Okay, yeah, just to reiterate, if this was a non, if the ad hoc did not have members of the public, would not be subject to the Brown Act. So, I will just go on the record saying, when we're spending potentially nine figures of public funding, I think it would be not prudent, it would be not smart government, it would be not transparent to not have at least four members of the public involved in this decision-making process. So, I, I would lean towards Councilmember Grant and her discussion as far as, I think, when you're going to spend this kind of money for public benefit, especially something as important as a police station, and public safety is paramount amongst all else, I think it would be prudent in our situation to have a, an ad hoc committee with three members of the council and four members of the public. And given the comments Councilmember Grant said, we have some legendary members of our community that would offer a tremendous amount of goodwill and, and, you know, institutional knowledge when it comes to a topic like this. So, that's where I stand. Councilmember Wigan?
Yes, just for staff, if, when we purchased Dove prior to me or most of us being on the council, except for Councilmember Blum, did they have an ad hoc committee to discuss that purchase of that site? Or how was that process done?
No, because negotiations are handled in closed session, because it's real property. So, we actually agendized it in closed session and talked about the terms of purchasing that property in closed session.
Right, because when we discussed, so they discussed the site prior to some of us being on council?
Well, we had a, we, there was a site available, and we took it to closed session and asked the council, if you're interested, what are the terms from the city council that we can make an offer to purchase that property?
Right, right, okay, okay.
Okay, any other council comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll now hear from the public related to item number eight. Mr. Moser?
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council, my name again is Jim Moser. One, one problem I've seen with ad hoc committees, whether they are council-only or hybrid council-citizen ad hoc committees, is that, as you know, without violating the Brown Act, only three of the council members can participate in them. So, that leaves four council members who cannot and cannot provide much direction if they think the committee, even if it meets in public, and they think it's going in the wrong direction, they can't do much about it until the final product comes back. As has been stated, this is a very significant, major decision that the city has to make. I would think the police department probably has some idea of where they would like police headquarters to be. We've heard rather opaque, non-transparent process by which we purchased a property in the airport area, 1201 Dove. Some years ago, there was a proposal, and actually worked out by city staff of how a police headquarters could be built in a redesigned corporate yard over on Superior. I don't know what other possibilities are. My suggestion would be that you request the staff to present the range of possibilities to all of the council members at a study session, so that you can all participate in giving some direction to this ad hoc committee. And then after that, it would be appropriate to form some sort of a committee that would meet more frequently after it got direction from the whole council, rather than just starting out with three council members being the only ones participating. So, I think it would be best to have a study session with a discussion of all the different possibilities that there are for a, for a police headquarters and the change, and give, give direction to that, and then, and only then, appoint an ad hoc committee, whether you want it to be, and I think it would be best to have citizen members on that too, but after a study session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Any other public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back here. Mr. Blum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm, I'm going to draw a parallel to what Councilmember Wigan was asking when we were talking about property purchases, because as we start discussing this, there is a lot of property at stake. And so, to start divulging terms and questions puts us in a very interesting piece for negotiation. So, I would like to move that we adjust this to a council-only ad hoc. And that is my motion.
Mr. Wigan?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to second that. I think Mr. Moser hits some key points there, but I think the initial step needs to be done at the level that Councilmember Blum is referring to, and then flesh it out in a study session. That is where the public's going to get an opportunity to speak and hear out how much money we're going to spend, how this move's going to look, where it's going to go, does it work? And I think that that, that gives a lot more speedience to it. We, we, we do have to move quickly on it. I think there's some, some other reasons that, that are coming through down the road that, that require Dove to potentially have some other looks, if that's a viable site. So, I, I would, I would support that with a second.
Okay, Councilmember Weber had the second first, are you okay? Okay, so we'll go Councilmember Wa- Wa- Wigan with the second. Respectfully, I was encouraged and looking forward to serving on this committee, but I will be no longer willing to serve on this committee, but I'm sure we'll have three, huh? Okay, we can have that discussion. With that being said, I will not vote no, I will abstain only because I want to see this move forward, because this is very important to get this going. So, we have a first, a second, any further comments? Seeing none, we will go to vote.
Motion passes five to one. No vote being Councilmember Grant and Mayor Stapleton abstaining.
Okay, terrific. Let's see. Okay, we'll go to item number 16, we'll move the public hearing portion of our agenda. This is the item amending titles 20 and 21 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code establishing the special flood zone area overlay. So, do we need a staff report on this on council? Okay, seeing none. Any councilmembers have any questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will go to the, open to the public hearing at this moment. Public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back here, I'll officially close the public hearing. Any additional comments, comments, council comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion? Okay, Councilmember Blum first, Councilmember Weber seconds, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, terrific, moving on. Item number 17, Resolution 2025-66 Coyote Canyon Landfill Gas to Energy Facility Appeal. Councilmember Wigan, do you, does he not have any announcement, conflict of interest?
Yes, I had an abundance of caution because of the parent company of my employer, San Diego Gas and Electric, who has investments in companies within the natural gas industry. I will have to recuse myself.
Okay, anyone else have any conflicts of interest at this, on this item, or any ex parte communication related to this item? Okay, seeing none. Okay, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers, good evening. Simone Georges, with me is Jocelyn Perez. This item is actually an appeal that is appealed from the city council, from the planning commission. After Jocelyn makes a very short presentation, both the appellant and the applicant are here to address the city council. So, Jocelyn, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mayor Stapleton, my name is Jocelyn Perez. I'm a senior planner with the planning division, and I'm going to give you a brief overview of the Coyote Canyon Landfill Gas to Energy Project. The project site is located up in Newport Coast. The nearest land uses are Sage Hill School and the Tesoro Residential Community, both of which are over 1,000 feet from the project site. The project site outlined in red is owned and operated by Orange County Waste and Recycling. It is within the Coyote Canyon landfill. The project site historically has been used to manage landfill gas that is generated by the waste in the main Coyote Canyon landfill. From 1988 to 2015, the project site had a landfill gas to energy facility that converted the landfill gas into electricity. Around 2015, the quality of the gas became that where the technology at the time was unable to effectively convert it into electricity. So, the facility was removed, and telecoms were conducted, constructed on the project site. And today, the site still manages landfill gas, because the landfill continues to generate gas. However, it is not treated or transformed into anything else, it is merely flared off through the onsite flares to the sky. Shortly after the removal of the old landfill gas to energy facility, OC Waste and Recycling released an RFP looking for a new operator to bring new technology to the site that could convert the landfill gas into something renewable. Arkea, the applicant, was selected to construct and operate a new landfill gas to energy facility, and so they proposed to construct a landfill gas to renewable natural gas energy facility. They will install equipment in the area I've highlighted in purple and brown. They'll construct a new underground pipe to inject that renewable natural gas into existing SoCal gas infrastructure. They'll also install a new fire hydrant, and they'll install support infrastructure for the two employees that would be onsite to operate the facility. I have shaded in gray the telecoms that will remain, as well as the existing flares that will flare off any landfill gas in the event that the plant is closed for a maintenance shutdown or goes offline. The project site is zoned open space, and so major utilities are allowed with a conditional use permit. So, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit. And as part of that process, the project underwent environmental review in compliance with SEQA. A mitigated NEG deck was prepared for the project, and it found with mitigation there are no impacts to the environment. The project went before the planning commission in mid-July. The planning commission approved the conditional use permit and adopted the mitigated NEG deck. An appeal was filed by Adams, Broadwell, Joseph, and Cardozo on behalf of Orange County residents for responsible development. And so, that brings us here today, where we're having a de novo hearing, so a new hearing on the project. A little bit about the appellant's claims. The appellant claims that there are significant environmental risks that were not mitigated from both the operation of the landfill gas to energy facility and the construction of. They also allege that the project will not be adequately served by Fire Protection Services, and that the project is inconsistent with the general plan, specifically Policy Natural Resources 8.1, which result, is related to emissions from construction equipment. Staff has analyzed the appeal and responds that most of the environmental concerns brought up in the appeal have been previously addressed. As part of the preparation of that mitigated NEG deck comment, there was a public review period, and five comments were submitted on the project. While not required for a mitigated NEG deck, those comments were catalogued and responded to in what's called an RTC, a response to comments, and that is a part of the mitigated NEG deck. So, the environmental concerns were addressed previously in that response to comment. There were two comments that the appellant made. They noted that the planning commission staff report mistakenly stated a 12-month construction period, and it, the construction period will be nine months. And they also noted that there was a condition of approval that allowed equipment to idle for longer than what was analyzed in the mitigated NEG deck. So, for this, for the council resolution, that has been updated, and the staff report has been corrected. So, it, the ISMD relies on the correct construction timeline, and the staff report reflects that. Also, this, the city's SEQA consultant prepared a technical memo, which is also in the resolution, that identifies where in that response to comments document I mentioned, where these environmental comments have been addressed. With regards to Fire Protection Services, the, the project was reviewed in conjunction with the Fire Department, and all recommendations for the project were incorporated either into the design, into the mitigation monitoring reporting program, or into the conditions of approval. With that, staff recommends approval of the project, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is the appellant here or the applicant? Okay.
Good evening, council, my name is Kalila Fetterman. On behalf of appellant, Orange County Residents for Responsible Development, I request 10 minutes.
Just a moment.
I won't take the whole time.
Typically, we hear from the applicant first, and then the appellant, that's all right?
Sure, that's fine.
Is the applicant here? You requested 10 minutes?
Yes, please.
Okay, so you guys, if you guys would like 10 minutes. Certainly, you certainly don't have to use the whole 10 minutes, but we'll give you guys the same.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tyler Henson. I am the External Affairs Manager for Arkea Energy. I'm here to just give a quick presentation. Promise I won't take up 10 minutes' time. Do this. Want to work this properly. Okay. Okay, just some quick introductions. Said, me up. Landfill gas to electric. Oops. There we go. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Industry-leading platforms. Said 14 RNG facilities, 31 landfill gas to energy facilities, and three medium BTU plants and four OEMs. We focus on end-to-end development of RNG facilities to transform waste emissions into low-carbon fuel. And we are driven by a technology-driven approach paired with gas processing expertise, advancing operational excellence. And we're differentiated commercial strategy focusing on long-term commercial partnerships that provide a multi-decade decarbonization solution to displace fossil fuels. The map just shows we are located in 32 states and growing, and we have 50 operated sites across the United States. And I'm sorry from that, those little dots up there, it's a little hard to see, but they break down from RNG to LFGD facilities to dairy digesters. Just want to touch on safety. Safety is a core value and our highest priority. We follow a rigorous health and safety training regime to understand, to ensure we're familiar with the equipment and the procedures. We establish written policies, site-specific safety plans designed to comply with local, state, and federal law standards. One thing I do like to highlight that's on here, how we take safety seriously. We have a live list through our company of any incidents that happened at our facilities. A good example, we had two of our operators who were having a discussion onsite. One of them got stung by a bee. He was required to report that into the system. So in our incident reports, we put that down. Okay, benefits of an RNG facility. So from this page right here, we have a picture of a landfill with no gas collection. Obviously methane, CO2 are just vented directly to the atmosphere. LFGD facility, C4, I mean, CO2 is captured and flared, converted. Not all of it is used beneficially. It goes through a diesel generator, converted generator. Parts of it's flared, other parts is turned to electricity. Landfill gas with an RNG facility, try to capture up to 90% of the methane to reduce site emissions. And here's just a better diagram of how our facilities operate. So we vacuum service, the hydrogen sulfide treating, CO2, and the volatile organic compounds removal. Then it moves to a nitrogen removal phase. There, goes through thermal oxidizer, apologies, provides safe destruction of the VOCs, then to an oxygen removal, and then to a final compression stage. Our emission comparison data. We have showing just pre-project and post-project, and these are estimates. And the benefits we have here. So converting landfill gas RNG significantly decreases emissions from flared gas. And we have reduced emissions encompasses CO2, methane, nitrous oxides. It's also a revenue generation for the county. This process will generate revenue for the county from the sale of the LFG that would otherwise be flared. And it's a fuel security and natural gas fuel diversity. So this program reduces the dependence on fossil fuels and supports California's carbon neutrality goal. And what will the local communities notice? So short-term impacts this project to community may include increased truck traffic, potential visual obstructions from construction equipment, noise and dust emissions. We've carefully assessed these, these effects, and are implementing measures to minimize this impact on the community, and will coordinate with the neighboring community during all phases of the construction process. As mentioned, when I was here at the planning commission, we did do a public engagement at the rec center. We did have a representative from the local high school came. And one thing we want to work with to ensure is that we're not messing with the flow of traffic, like kids are getting dropped off and picked up. And so then we will work with the construction accordingly. And I believe there's a condition in that application to ensure that we're not going to be messing with those drop-off and pickup times. These are just some site simulations that we put in here. I don't want to take up all your time, so I won't bother reading those. But there's a project footprint, landfill. These are pictures, site simulations of what's existing right now, and then the proposed view of the facility, of what it would look like from different angles. And then here's just a 3D mentoring mock-up of the facility. And that wraps it up.
Okay, thank you. We'll give the same time to the appellant. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Kalila Fetterman. On behalf of Orange County residents for responsible development. Residents is a coalition of individuals and labor organizations whose members live, work, and raise their families in the project vicinity. Residents and its members support sustainable industrial development in Orange County, but are concerned about public health and safety and environmental impacts from development in areas where their members and families live and work. Residents filed this appeal to ensure that the city complies with its obligations to address the project's environmental and public health impacts under SEQA and local land use laws. The staff report demonstrates that the city still has not complied with applicable laws and asks the council to take its non-compliance a step further by adopting a legally inadequate MND and exempting the project entirely from environmental review. Residents urges the council to uphold this appeal and remand the project to staff to prepare an environmental impact report that complies with SEQA. The project would build a new renewable natural gas processing plant and pipeline interconnection to convert landfill gas into natural gas. Project construction and operation would have significant air quality and noise impacts and uniquely dangerous public health and hazards impacts, which the city's MND did not disclose or mitigate. The appeal provided the city with substantial expert evidence supporting a fair argument that the project results in unmitigated air quality, public health, and noise impacts, which require the city to prepare an EIR. The planning commission approved the project without complying with SEQA and without adequate mitigation, resulting in a project which poses hazards to public health, safety, and the general welfare of persons residing and working near the project in violation of state and local land use requirements. The appeal raises several unresolved issues. First, the appeal provided expert evidence demonstrating that construction emissions and fugitive air pollutant emissions during project operation result in significant unmitigated air quality impacts. Yesterday, residents' air quality expert Ray Kapahi provided new evidence demonstrating that the project would result in significant fugitive emissions from volatile organic compounds from leaking components like connectors, valves, and compressors. The emissions would exceed South Coast Air Quality Management District's four tons per year offset limit. Mr. Kapahi also found that the project would have significant nitrogen oxide emissions, NOCs, from construction equipment, which contribute to the exceedances of federal and state one-hour ambient air quality standards, resulting in unmitigated violations of applicable air quality standards. The city also failed to disclose significant welding emissions, which include toxic emissions of heavy metals like hexavalent chromium and lead. And given the project's significant air quality impacts, an MND is improper, and the city must prepare an EIR. Second, the appeal demonstrated that the project would have significant unmitigated hazards and public health impacts from a potential facility upset, including explosions, jet fire, and toxic vapor clouds. The MND suggests that the applicant will take steps to reduce these impacts, but does not include binding mitigation. As a result, there is no assurance that the project's hazards impact will be less insignificant and may instead endanger nearby sensitive receptors at Sage Hill High School within 1,500 feet of the project and residences located within 1,200 feet of the project. Third, the appeal demonstrated that the project's proposed annual shutdown and 10 potential annual shutdown days per year would result in ongoing flaring of potentially significant greenhouse gas emissions. Fourth, the appeal provided substantial expert evidence demonstrating that construction noise would result in significant impacts to nearby sensitive noise receptors. But the MND lacks mitigation to reduce construction noise to less than significant levels. Orange County residents' expert noise consultant, Mr. Meagan's comments demonstrate that construction noise would result in noise so loud, it would be perceived as doubling compared to the existing ambient noise. Under SEQA's fair argument standard, the city was required to prepare an EIR because substantial evidence in the record supports a fair argument that the project may have a significant effect on the environment. But that's not what staff proposes. Rather than comply with SEQA, the city is doubling down on its efforts to avoid environmental review by proposing that the city council uphold the planning commission's adoption of the MND and simultaneously find that the project is exempt from SEQA under two inapplicable exemptions. The MND does not meet SEQA standards, and the proposed exemptions do not apply to the project. The first proposed exemption under SEQA, section 21094.5, only applies to infill projects like residential, schools, or commercial development. This project is an industrial landfill to renewable natural gas facility, as the council knows. It is not an infill project and does not qualify for this exemption. The second exemption sought under SEQA guidelines 15308 does not apply because it is reserved for projects by public agencies that assure environmental preservation or restoration. The second exemption does not apply either. Staff asserts that the project will convert LFG to RNG and eliminate flaring, but in this case, flaring will continue during facility shutdowns, and the project results in significant unmitigated construction and operational air pollution. Section 15308 expressly excludes construction activities and relaxation of standards allowing environmental degradation, both of which occur here. The city's own evidence also demonstrates that the project is not exempt from SEQA. Only projects which have no significant effect on the environment may be categorically exempted from SEQA review, and SEQA prohibits mitigated categorical exemptions. But here, the MND already determined that the project has significant impacts which require mitigation in nine separate areas, including biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous waste, hydrology and water quality, public services, transportation, tribal cultural resources, and wildfire. And the MND includes 17 mitigation measures and 37 conditions of approval to reduce those significant impacts. So the city's own record demonstrates that the project has significant impacts which require mitigation, thus eliminating the possibility for an exemption. Finally, the project violates the city's municipal code due to its outstanding unmitigated air quality, noise, and public health impacts. These impacts make the project detrimental to public health and safety and the general welfare and inconsistent with the general plan. In sum, residents' appeal demonstrates that the planning commission abused its discretion and failed to proceed in the manner required by law by approving the project without complying with SEQA and local land use laws. Residents respectfully requests that the city council uphold this appeal, vacate the planning commission's approvals, and remand the project to staff to prepare an EIR to address the impacts identified by residents and its experts. These actions are critical to ensure that the project complies with SEQA and all applicable laws, and to ensure that the health and safety of city residents and workers is protected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Comments? No?
We can, we can bring our SEQA consultant up, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. What's your name?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is, can you hear me okay? My name is Dina Alshamas. I am the SEQA, I'm, I'm the project manager and a senior engineer at Placeworks. We conducted the SEQA analysis on behalf of the city. Just to put in context, the letters, the comment letters that we've received from the same organization that you heard from tonight, we did receive two letters from them during the public review period. We responded to those comments in an official response to comment document. And then we also, after the public review period was, was closed, we received three further comments, including the appeal letter and then a sixth one tonight. And we have the RTC that has the response to comments, and then we have two letters that we also prepared that were part of the staff reports to respond to the letters that we got after the public review period closed. So tonight, we're looking at a sixth comment from them. We reviewed their comments. Our technical team reviewed their comments. And in essence, there is nothing new that has not been addressed in the RTC and the two letters that were included in the staff report. And now to address specifically some of the comments that were brought up just now. In broad, in broad terms, the comments relate to air quality, greenhouse gas, health risks, and hazards from fires. In terms of air quality, greenhouse gas, and health risks, this project, South Coast AQMD is a responsible agency on this project. A lot of the equipment for this project needs to be permitted by South Coast AQMD, so they've reviewed both the permits and the IS MND. We did receive a comment letter from South Coast AQMD during the public review period. We responded to that comment and received no further comments from South Coast AQMD. So some of the issues that are being brought up tonight are under the purview of South Coast AQMD, and we have not received those types of comments from them. They, they've reviewed all of our analyses. They've looked at all the modeling, all of the results. The other thing also to keep in mind, in terms of air, air quality, GHG, and health risk, all of the analyses that we did for the IS MND relates to a very specific scenario, a scenario called the PTE. So it's, it's a scenario that's the absolute maximum emissions permitted by South Coast AQMD for this facility. This is worst-case scenario, very conservative. This is the maximum that this facility is allowed to emit. And even under this scenario, all of the, all of the South Coast AQMD thresholds for air quality, GHG, and health risk analysis, none of, none of these were exceeded. The project is actually well below all of South Coast AQMD thresholds. The other issue that they brought up is hazards from a fire event. The Newport Beach Fire Department was heavily involved in the process of putting together the IS MND. They went out to the site twice, did a site walkthrough, marked any kind of hazards that they saw from the surrounding trees that could, could be a fire hazard, either from a fire on the site, going offsite, or the other way around. They requested a fuel modification plan. We put that in the IS MND as a mitigation measure. That fuel modification plan has since been prepared, reviewed, and approved by Newport Fire, Fire Department. They have no issues with mitigation measures or even the fuel modification plan that kind of mitigates any kind of fire hazards from the project. They'll also be very heavily involved in any kind of site plan review, final site plan reviews. All of those will be reviewed by Newport Beach Fire Department, and all of the permits will be approved, have been reviewed and approved by South Coast AQMD. So that's just kind of like taking a step back and looking at the broader issues that have been brought up, and just to give you an idea of how they have been analyzed, how they have been mitigated, and in essence, kind of responding to the comments that have been brought up in this later, this latest letter that, that was submitted yesterday, as well as the appeal letter. And if you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Councilmember Grant.
I, that was a great, a lot of information from all parties, and I greatly appreciate it. I guess I would just give a very general question to our staff. Having heard all of that, you know, we're looking to you for your expertise. Are you comfortable moving forward with this project, given the objections and the responses to those objections?
We still recommend that the council deny the appeal and approve the project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing other comments up here, we'll go open public hearing. Okay, any? Okay, any public comments on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is William Kuntz on behalf of the Orange County Residents for Responsible Development. OC Residence is a coalition of local residents and labor organizations that is concerned about the public health and safety and environmental impacts from development in areas within our members and our families. Residents filed this appeal because we are concerned about the impacts of this new landfill gas facility on local communities and the environment. Our air quality expert found that the project would cause significant air pollution that isn't mitigated. They found the construction equipment that would have NOx emissions that violate air quality standards even after mitigation, this contributes to greenhouse gas pollution. They found that project equipment would leak volatile organic compounds. The applicant says project equipment would never leak, but our experts provided scientific evidence the leaks are common in industrial projects like this, even in closed-loop systems. The project would also have major public safety impacts if there is an explosion. The project needs mitigation measures to reduce the hazards to the local community, especially residents and the Sage Hill School that are just fifteen hundred feet from the project. These issues must be addressed to make sure that the project reduces landfill pollution safely. Please uphold our appeal and prepare an environmental impact report. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and go back to the applicant. Would you like to make any closing remarks?
Again, Tyler Henson, Exter, Arki Energy. Just wanted to make a, I'll just say a quick statement on the volatile organic compounds that was stated from the appellant in the reading. So, believe they incorrectly calculated by assuming all gas from component leaks are a hundred percent, whereas the LFG at the front of the plant has trace amounts of volatile organic compounds. Additionally, volatile organic compounds are removed early in the process in the TSA skid. Any downstream equipment would contain minimal to no VOC, volatile organic compounds, I'll just say VOC. VOCs are significantly less than one ton per year, and so we just ask that you deny the appeal and that we can move forward with this project. We're excited about it and hope we can move forward. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would like the appellant like to make closing comments?
Thank you, Kalila Fetterman, on behalf of Orange County Residents for Responsible Development. Our expert found that VOC emissions, even in a closed-loop system, there are fugitive emissions of VOCs that would result in significant air quality impacts, and this is substantial evidence supporting a fair argument of a significant environmental impact. And under SEQA, the city is required to prepare an EIR, and that's laid out in our comments. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions by council members? Councilmember Grant?
One more question. In all of this process from beginning to end, did we get any input from Sage Hill High School? Were there any letters or testimony or anything like that from the school?
They were invited to a public outreach meeting, but we didn't have any attendance at the public outreach meeting.
Thank you.
Sage Hill was present.
The applicant is stating that Sage Hill did attend the meeting.
Okay.
If they attended the meeting, I'm just wondering, did they have any, did they present any objection or, you know, any letters or testimony that would indicate how they felt about the...I understand that they're the closest to this project, the closest development to this project.
So we didn't receive any comments?
No comments from them.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other council comments, questions, motion?
Happy to make a motion to deny the appeal and move forward.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Weber? All right, let's vote.
This is 620 with the recusal of Councilmember Wagon.
Okay, assuming Councilmember Wagon's back coming up next to the dais, we'll go on to current business, moving on to item which was appointment of our new city clerk. So, here we go. Appointment of Lena Shumway as city clerk and approval of appointment agreement. City manager, you want to make a?
Well, yes, I have tariff again.
Oh, tariff's here, okay. Assistant city manager. Ms. Fitterman, would you like to give us a brief report?
I would, Mayor and members of the council. We are required to read aloud the key terms of Ms. Shumway's proposed agreement. And with that, the proposed agreement what the city clerk provides for, a term from October 20th, 2025 through December 31st, 2028, a base salary of $200,977, with future increases after October 20th of this year, tied to any percentage increase, schedule, or cost of living adjustment provided to key and management employees, an auto allowance of $400 per month in terms of deferred compensation effective the pay period that includes October 20th of this year, a biweekly contribution of three percent of the city clerk's base salary will be made to her city-sponsored 457 deferred compensation account. Flex leave, the city clerk will accumulate flex leave as provided for in the key and management compensation plan, executive management category, at the rate designated for employees with years of service in the 15 and over category. Administrative leave, effective October 20th, the city clerk will receive forty hours of paid administrative leave, and then effective January 1st, 2026, she will receive eighty hours of administrative leave per calendar year. There is a severance term included in the proposed agreement, a severance of up to six months of base salary and medical benefits if terminated without cause. And lastly, there are other benefits afforded to the city clerk, all other benefits received by key and management employees, including reimbursement for an annual physical exam, a phone allowance, holiday pay, holiday closure leave, and participation in CalPERS in the Launa supplemental pension program.
Okay, terrific. Any council members have any questions or comments related to this item? Okay, seeing none, any public comments on this item? Mr. Moser?
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council, my name again is Jim Moser. I don't know the new city clerk. I trust that in closed session you made a good choice, and my only comment is if you're not planning to do so, I think it would be appropriate to thank interim clerk Perry for the service that she has provided the last several months. I think she's done a very good job. Thank you.
I could second that motion for sure. Well done, Molly. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, any additional council comments or questions on this item? Okay, cool. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the new city clerk item. Do I have a second? Okay, Councilmember Weber, seconds. Let's vote.
Motion unanimous, Lee Carries.
Congratulations, Lena. Welcome to the team. Thank you. And I will just echo Mr. Moser's comments, Molly. Thank you for your service to our great community. We do greatly value your time and commitment, and hopefully you will continue to enjoy retirement and go travel. But thank you for coming out of retirement and helping us through this time, so greatly appreciated. Thank you. Okay, one final time, Madam Clerk, please read motion for consideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, any motions for reconsideration? Okay, hearing none. Before we head into closed session, I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of my good friend Jeffrey John Betetti. Tonight, we adjourn in the memory of affectionately known as JJB, who recently passed away after a sudden and brief illness. Jeff was born in Texas, moved to Newport Beach with his family in 1971, and never left the community he loved. A proud Newport Harbor High School graduate, class of '78, Jeff excelled both on the football field and the performing arts. There was never a song he didn't like to sing. He set the school's single-season sack record, starred in school musicals, and served as a senior class president. He was inducted in the Daily Pilot Hall of Fame in 2003. After high school, Jeff attended Claremont College and later the University of Southern California, a very proud Trojan. He was an accomplished musician, performing with the Jeffrey John Band at well-known venues such as the House of Blues and the Coach House. Jeff built a successful career in commercial real estate, working with Nexus Development and other firms, contributing to major projects such as MacArthur Place and Santa Ana. Jeff gave gracious generously of his time and energy to charitable causes, including the Ronnie Lott Foundation, which I served with him for a number of years and just love my service with him, Rock for Chalk, Orangewood Children's Home, and Miracles for Kids. A man of strong faith, Jeff led his beliefs through kindness, service, and music ministry. He was a devoted husband, father, brother, and a friend who inspired those around him with his energy, his humor, and his optimism. Jeff will be remembered for his love of family and friends, his deep community ties, and his belief in bringing good people together for great results. He is survived by his wife, Jarette, sister Kimberly, brother Stephen, and his sons, Dominic, Dante, and Damien. His legacy will continue through them. Okay, before we go into closed session, I would like to...any public comments on closed session items? Okay, seeing none. City Attorney Harp, would you please announce our closed session item?
All right, thank you, Mayor Stapleton. The city council adjourned to closed session to meet with legal counsel regarding the possible initiation of litigation regarding one item. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go into closed session. Thank you.
You
All right, we're back. You ready? Okay, Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
There's no closed session report.
That we stand adjourned. Thank you.